Recording has started.
I see you're all set? Okay, I call the August 25th, 2020 meeting of the Newton Planning Board to order. As Chair of the Newton Planning Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor, as a result of COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, and most recently extended by Executive Order 2020-16, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has that access to contemporaneously listen, and if necessary, participate in this meeting telephonically or by going to the Zoom website. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting telephonically. Instructions have been provided on the Town website. Anyone has problems, they should email the Planning Board Office at planningboard@newtonnh.net. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be rescheduled and adjourned. Please note that all votes will be taken during this meeting, shall be done by roll call vote. Also, in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 23 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, and most recently extended by Executive Order 2020-16, Planning Board is relieved from the statutory and local requirements to meet on a particular schedule or a certain number of times within a given timeframe. The Planning Board is also relieved from complying with statutory and local deadlines for accepting, hearing, and acting on Planning Board applications. Note, as an attendee at this meeting, your microphone and our phone will be muted. The Planning Board Chair will specify when the public comment period is open for an application. Town staff will be in attendance at the meeting to manage the public comment process. Are participating online with the Zoom program, click on the hand icon at the bottom of the screen. This will raise your hand so that the moderator knows that you wish to speak. Are participating by phone, press star nine. This will indicate to the moderator that you wish to speak. When it is your turn, the moderator will unmute you and let you know that you can share your comments. When speaking during the meeting, please announce your name so the administrative assistant can know who is speaking as he is taking minutes. The administrative assistant will now call the role of the members.
Mr. Hamel. Please state if you're alone.
Yes, I'm alone.
Ms. Estabrook.
I'm not alone.
Ms. Collier.
I'm here and I am not alone.
Mr. Foote.
I'm here and again, it's a public meeting.
Mr. White. Mr. Andrews.
I'm here and I'm alone.
And Mr. Cromlich has sent in his regrets. You do have a quorum, Mr. Chair. You have five of seven present.
So Mr. White is not present?
He did not respond.
I see Barbara there.
Yeah, could you also get the attendance of the ordinance?
That's what I'm going for.
This is Jim White.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. White.
Very well, and I did respond.
Okay, sorry. Ms. Allen.
It was a lot of static. Maybe that's her.
That is her. Okay, Ms. Allen. Okay, Ms. White.
Here and not alone.
Mr. Sforza.
Present.
Mr. Mr. Zott. Mr. Zalinski.
Here and alone.
Very good, Mr. Chair. With the exception of Mr. Cromlich and Mr. Zott, all present.
Okay, with six regular members, I will appoint Mrs. Sforza as a voting member for this evening. The first item on the agenda is 125 Development Corp. Plastow requesting a public hearing for the four lot subdivision at Six Puzzle Lane, New Hampshire, property reference, tax map 14, block one, lot 273. And I will be recusing myself for this and the next item on the agenda. So Sandy, you can chair the meeting, please.
Thank you. I don't know. Okay, I'm just thinking out loud. So I just want to mention that some of the people that are further down on the agenda, this might take a while, so I don't know. Because we're going to go in order by the agenda. So I don't know if you want to sit through the whole thing or not. You can come and go. Okay, so the first on the agenda, as Roger mentioned, is a continuation of 125 Development Corp., Plastow, New Hampshire, because the public hearing for a four lot subdivision at Six Puzzle Lane, property reference, tax map 14, block one, lot 273. As Roger noticed, please state your name when you speak, and we'll be muted, and we'll do the hand raising for the public to speak. Jennifer, would you like to give your input on the completeness of the application?
Sure, Sandy. As of just a couple days before the last meeting, the applicant did submit all of the waiver requests for information that they had not otherwise provided. There are a total of actually eight waivers. Their most recent submittal simply didn't include the request for fees to be waived. So there are eight waivers total. Based upon that, I do think the application is complete. Enough for jurisdiction. I would recommend the Board then take up each waiver individually. And then if they're all granted, we move on, and if they're, if one or more is not granted, then depending on what it is, the information may still need to be provided. The one additional piece of information the applicant did submit was an aerial photo that had a superimpose of the lot lines that did show the aerial photo of the entire four parcels. I don't know if they want to speak to that or not, but.
Madam Vice Chair, do you wish to put anybody in as a voting member for Mr. Hamel?
Oh, I thought, oh, I thought Roger already did.
No, he replaced Mr. Sforza. Sorry, Mr. Cromlich.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. So I'll do Barbara White to fill in for Roger, please. As he has stepped down for this one.
Sandy, this is Jen. Just one other thing. If the Board does take jurisdiction, whether you get through all of the waivers or not, by taking jurisdiction, that does enable you to do a site walk, just as a aside, if that becomes of that.
Okay. In order to take up the waivers, we have to take jurisdiction though, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
The application is complete because, in my opinion, the application is complete because they've submitted the waiver requests. You will need to vote on the completeness, however.
Correct.
So. Madam Vice Chair, this is Annie.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, I'm great. I'd like to make a motion that we take jurisdiction of this proposed four lot subdivision.
Well, I was gonna ask if anybody had any input first. Do you want to have some input discussion first, or no?
I think it's fine to have discussion. Do whatever way you want. I thought you were asking for a motion.
No.
Sandy, since there was a motion in a second, you guys can have discussion on the motion right now.
Okay, okay, we can have discussion on the motion. Okay, would any Planning Board men like to discuss the motion to just go right to the discussion on whether to take jurisdiction? Sounds good. Okay. I don't hear any objections, so I guess we'll go to the question. Well, the motion. So Jim, can you read the motion?
The motion is to take jurisdiction.
Oh. Not to discuss jurisdictions, so no.
Nobody talked on the motion.
Sandy, I would recommend calling for a vote since there was no discussion. This is Jen.
Calling for a vote on the motion?
To accept jurisdiction.
Okay.
You had a second. You had no discussion.
Okay. So Jim, call the role on the motion to take jurisdiction.
Ms. Estabrook.
Yes.
Mr. Edwards. All right, Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Foote.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Ms. Collier.
Yes.
Mr. Sforza.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yep. That is unanimous.
Okay. So we've officially taken jurisdiction of the plan. Correct. Correct. So now we can move to the waiver requests. I don't know what order you want to do these in.
I did them. I have a list here of them, and what I did is these are the citations of what's being asked to be waived in just the list of how they came in.
Okay.
So Sandy, this is Jen. Just one thing before you guys get into all of the waivers. Hurry your regulations and your subdivision regulations, 10.1D. The Board may grant a waiver from any portion of these regulations when, in the opinion of the majority of the members of the Board present in voting, they find that there are two criteria. A, strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant. And two, the granting of the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the ordinance. So I would recommend that when you're going through each of these waivers, you talk about those two components. You don't have to vote on them separately. It would just be one vote per waiver.
Okay, thank you. That's what I'm. I didn't know if it would be beneficial to anyone to read the whole section on waivers and the general rules of the waivers.
So those are the main criteria. The other main component is that the granting of the waiver will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. The waiver will not in any manner vary the provisions of the zoning ordinance, master plan, or official maps. The waivers will substantially secure the objective standards and requirements of these regulations. And then factors that can be considered are, but not limited to, topography, site features, geographic location, the Board's familiarity with the property, unreasonable expense for complying with the requirement, and the Board's practice of granting a waiver in a similarly situated proposal.
Okay.
That's the main.
Okay. And it does say, "The general purpose of granting waivers under provisions of these regulations shall be to ensure that an applicant is not unduly burdened, as opposed to merely inconvenienced by said regulation. The Board should not approve waivers unless a majority of those present in voting shall find that all of the following apply." And then there's A, B, C, and D also, along with the small a and b. So, just to clarify. Okay, the other thing I did notice, can you bring up the letter that the applicant sent us with all the waivers on it? Jim?
It's on the screen.
Okay, so thank you. So I believe there are typographical errors in his requests.
Yes.
So I don't know if he has to correct those, or if we can do editorial correction, but just to note that those, those things that he quoted aren't in our book, really.
You can do the editorial. You don't have to publish waiver requests.
Okay, so.
Just in your motion, in your motion, and any approval or denial, you want to have the correct reference.
Right, because I was looking for those, and it's like, I can't find those. And then I did notice that when Jim sent us the packet, he crossed out the three and wrote a five. So then I was better on track, because Jim had made that editorial correction. So thank you, Jim, for that. So let's see. Want to start? We'll start with the one that's on the board, I guess, here. Number one. So it should be RS 8.1.5.c. So. Do I read what the applicant says, or do I read what our thing says?
You should read what the applicant's justification is, or let them speak to that fact.
Okay. So. The applicant said, "Survey requirements. We are asking for a waiver on this section for the remainder of parcel 273, which consists of 164 acres, and has no developmental process for this subdivision. This parcel will be subdivided later time, and has information will be provided at that point. The perimeter property lines are shown, all existing and proposed parcels. Sheet five has added showing existing conditions of the area of the parcel as it approaches Route 108." So. Would any Board members like to speak on that? I guess I have to say something then. I don't think this should be waived because it affects the lot, one of the lots. And that it should, I mean, it should be part of the plan.
I have a question. This is Annie.
Okay.
I know that in the meeting before I joined you, joined the Planning Board, you approved a three lot subdivision with one parcel of forty-some acres that was separate. In that case, was there a survey of the forty acres?
Annie, this is Jen. Yes, and it was also required for the subdivision to be recorded. But I believe in that case, the entire wetlands may not have been delineated where they were not proposing work.
They were not?
I believe in that case, they did request a waiver from delineating all of the wetlands. They delineated some of the wetlands.
Okay.
No other questions?
Mike, Mike Andrews. My main question, it's gonna be to the applicant, and I'm sure he'll speak on this shortly, but I'm trying to find, of the many requirements that we're asking for, what is the actual hardship that makes this different for this particular applicant than anyone? So that's one thing I'm looking for when the applicant speaks.
Okay. Would the applicant like to give a reply, because it sounds like?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yep, this is Bill Gregsec, Gregsec and Sons. At the time, we were preparing these plans, so we did not have all of the information that was required for this. We do have all the wetlands located as shown on the plan, and we have all of the. The perimeter is complete on these plans. As far as the detail of the topography, test pits, and soils, they were not complete. And as everybody knows, we are submitting Phase Two and Phase Three on Thursday, and that information will be on those subdivision plans.
Bill, this is Jen. Just to clarify, so you now have the full boundary survey complete? It's just not shown on the plan set we currently have?
The boundary survey should be complete on the overall 300 scale plan. On sheet two of the plan.
Sorry to clarify. You don't have the boundary to the scale that Newton requires in this plan set.
Correct, correct. And that comes under, that was our fifth request, the plan scale. But we do show all of the boundary.
Sandra?
Yes.
This is Barbara. I tried to raise my hand. It doesn't seem to work. In looking at this, I'm seeing that, I'm feeling like we could give this a waiver since they are going to include all this other information when they come back with the two, the two phases.
But in order to make this four lot subdivision, right, one of our requirements is that they show other conditions as it is now.
So Sandy, for this particular waiver, they don't have the distances, the bearings. There is detail of the whole survey. The second sheet that they are not showing, that's part of the requirement. It sounds like they do have it at this point. I would almost suggest that, and this is for the applicant, to consider withdrawing the waiver request and that you guys, or you guys grant it with any condition, that they actually be shown on the final approved plan set. If they already have them, I don't see that that would be a big issue.
I would be very happy to withdraw that waiver request if we don't need it.
Sandy, I think you just need to make sure that that gets, that absolutely gets put on the final plan set if we get to an approval.
Right, because I was gonna say, we voted to take jurisdiction because we felt it was complete now that he asked for all those waivers. So now if he doesn't ask for that waiver, are we going back to the, it's not complete?
Well, he already took jurisdiction because they granted the waiver. So you could either grant the waiver with the condition that it be put on the final plan set if you want to fully close the loop on it.
Okay.
This is Steve.
Hi, Steve. Go ahead.
I make a motion that we accept this waiver with the condition that it's on the final plan set.
Thank you, by Larry.
Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, this is Mike. I have, it's got to apply to all of these. And it comes back to the many things that were required when we actually approve a waiver, and one of them being hardship. All of these seem to be more of an inconvenience, because most of these, I'm hearing that, well, they're going to be on our, given to us on the next phase. So I have a, I have a slight problem with just granting these waivers, which were saying, okay, all those requirements, hardship, etc., just really don't matter then, just because it's an inconvenience at this time. So that's my point on this motion.
Yeah, well taken, because that is a line in the general waiver requests. So as Jen said, if we go to talking on the points, so point A was strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant. Right, correct? So it would not, if we made him stick to this, it would not make a hardship because he's already told us he has the information. In my opinion. And then the B is, the grant of the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the ordinance. So to me, if he already has the information, he should just put it on there.
Can I interject a little bit here, or am I talking out of turn?
Who's speaking?
This is Bill Gregsec again.
I'm Yarna Butter.
I'm the engineer.
Oh, you're the engineer. Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So what I'd like to say, yes, when we prepared the plans, we did not have all the information available. But I would like to point out that the, we are looking at a 166 acre parcel. Part of your other requirements are that, as we go down the list, our test pits and soils and topography, and obviously, what we're trying to do, we were trying to minimize the amount of information that would need to be shown where the important parcels were the actual lots that were either, that either, we're either going to have existing buildings on them or a proposed building. And what would happen to this plan set is that we would grow from five pages to eighteen pages. With information that would is coming to you in another set where it's more pertinent and more informative as far as you're concerned. This. I mean, I understand your regs, and no, I was not being disrespectful to them because, one, we didn't have all the information together when we had this put this application in. But what we were trying, what we are trying to do is, we are trying to minimize the amount of paper, the amount of information that. the amount of paper, the amount of information that really, for the most part, you know, the 166 acres doesn't really need to be discussed any further. When we come in with the Phase Two and Phase Three, that's when all that information is important.
Well, in my opinion, it's good to understand what the parcel looks like now and the topography now where you are splitting off into four lots to understand what is around those lots, you know, as you're proposing them.
Well, we do, we do show all the pertinent information for the proposed three lots. I mean, if you want me to go through and start loading you up with paper, I mean, that's fine. You know, you require five, five copies of large sets and 15 copies of 11 by 17, where really the most important information that you will need is really on the three lots. On Thursday, we will be submitting a very large package with all that information. So it will be before you as of Thursday afternoon.
May I ask a question, Sandy?
Well, go ahead, Annie.
Yeah. Mr. Gregzak, are you saying that you have all this information and that you're saying that the hardship for you is that you would have to do a lot of papers for us?
No, the hardship was since that when we prepared the plan set and submitted it to the town, that we did not have all this information gathered and put together. Here is a ton of information, as you can imagine, with 166 acres with the amount of wetlands flagging, well over 1,000 wetland flags were flagged and located, topography done. So, and the soils and the test pits. So no. What I'm saying is, is that all this information will be before you. And really, the important information that is before you was for lots 27, 5, 6, and 7.
Okay. I had, I had another question, please, Sandy.
Yeah.
And this is of Jen, by way of review, we needed to, you recommended getting an updated stamp, surveyor stamp on this plan, is that, am I right?
Correct. That was mainly to do with the frontage on 108 that they researched, stated they resurveyed that went from the 49.97 to 50.07.
Right.
That, I mean, I do think you need an updated plan surveyor stamp with any approval, but because of that change, I was just recommending you get that stamp with the updated plan set.
Okay. And then the other, oh, I've lost my other question, I'll come back to it, sorry. Oh, I know what was. This also has to be approved by Plastow in order to be officially done, is that correct?
Correct. Well.
So what's the status of that, Mr. Gregzak?
Well, excuse me, we're just, we're just gonna stay on the survey and on the waiver request right now because we have, this is gonna take a long time just to get through the waiver. So if we get back to the first waiver, I think we had a motion to call the question, right?
We had a motion to approve it.
To move this first.
Yeah, we had a motion and a second.
To move this first waiver, right?
Yeah, Sandy, you do also need to open that up to the public for any comments. I would just recommend that for the public, that what they can speak about is just this waiver requirement for the survey.
Okay. So Jim, does any of the public people have their hand up that would like to speak?
At the moment, I'm still admitting people.
Okay.
Sandy, this is Mike. While he's looking, I just want one clarification. Does the motion, I know we, did that include that this survey will be on the final plan as Jen suggested?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
There is somebody named John who's.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is John Suku. I'm one of the landlords at 36 South Main Street, right across from the fire station. And we have a concern about the water supply. Our water supply is off the property, off the fire department. I don't know if everybody is aware of that. Selectment foot should be.
Excuse me, I think we're not talking about that one yet.
We're not? Okay. When I heard public, I'm like, no, it's my mistake, I will.
That's okay.
Okay, so next time, when I hear public or?
Well, no, you have to wait till we finish all these seven waivers and then we have another thing. It's possible we might not get to you tonight.
Okay, well, I'll wait and my apologies again.
Okay, that's okay. It's confusing trying to figure out what's going on. Okay? Any other public comment on this first waiver request?
Mr. Ravencraft?
Okay.
Yeah, hi, this is Greg Ravencraft with Newton Properties. I was just wondering, can you clarify all of the waivers for me, please, that are being discussed?
Well, at this time, we're just talking about the first one, number one on the screen here is just the waiver for the survey requirements. We're gonna take them all up separately.
No, I get that. I'm sorry, I'm not able to join Zoom, but I'm on a conference call and so if you could just, again, clarify the waiver that we're discussing?
Okay, this is waiver from 815C for the survey requirement, just to have the survey, the outside survey, right, lot line.
Sandy, it's for all lot lines. Survey property lines must include, this is the regulation, angles, bearings, distances, monument locations, and the size of the entire parcel, and it needs to be stamped by a surveyor.
Okay, thanks, Jen.
All right, well, that being said, I just, I'm not quite sure why we would grant this waiver. It seems like a project of this magnitude that we would just want to make sure all of our bases are covered and have the proper survey requirements done.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Next is Mr. Alberti.
Mr. Alberti, could you state your name and are you in a butter?
Yes, Tom Alberti, a butter. And I just want to point out, I think Jen clarified this, that this is a four lot subdivision that you're reviewing and that the waiver applies to all four lots. So with that in mind, if only the information for the first three lots has been submitted, it seems that to truly consider the four lot subdivision, you need all the information pertaining to the four lots and therefore the waiver should not be approved, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelleher has his hand up.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Kelleher.
I was really just wondering, I know that I'm way down on the list, about what time should I be coming back for my, my part of this?
Did we make our motion about a certain time and then we're gonna open and close? How does that work? Or can we set a time now?
You're in the middle of a motion.
Yeah, I would wait till you get through this waiver, Sandy, and then you could do it.
I guess you have to hold on a minute. Okay, so anyone else, public, want to comment on this first waiver? Okay. Any other planning board members? Are we ready to the vote?
This is Mike, just because I know I, I'm the one who brought up hardship and I like to get back to some of these. And for me on this, because hardship does include many things and I'm usually a stickler on this, but I can actually find hardship with this only because of the size of it and the location, the site features, and that this motion itself will have this information on the final plan. So I'm ready to go forward to the vote.
And to clarify, it's gonna be on the final plan for this four lot subdivision, not the next one?
Correct. That's how I see this. That's what I'm hearing, this motion.
Yes. Okay, Jim, I guess call the question.
Zesterbrook.
Can you read the whole thing again, please?
It's, the motion is to move the, to grant the waiver as requested with the information to be on the final plan set.
For this four lot subdivision?
Well, yes.
Just for the survey requirements.
Okay. So you want to call the rule?
Ms. Zesterbrook?
No.
Mr. Andrews?
Hi.
Ms. White?
Hi.
Mr. Foot?
Hi.
Mr. White?
Hi.
Ms. Collier?
Hi.
Mr. Sforza?
Hi.
That is six to one.
Okay. Okay, now we'll move on to number two. Waiver from SR8.1.5.D, topographical contours. The applicant's asking for a waiver from this section for the remainder parcel 27-3, which consists of 164.66 acres and has no development proposed with this subdivision. This parcel will be subdivided at a later time and this information will be provided at that time. She, something has been added showing the existing conditions and contours of the area of the parcel as it approaches Route 108. So.
Sandy, do you want to motion on this so that we can discuss it?
Oh.
Okay, this is Annie. I move that we approve the waiver of topographical contours with the stipulation that they be added to the final plan set for this subdivision.
Thank you, bye Larry.
I thought you were gonna make a motion to talk about it. You skipped me. Go ahead.
I didn't understand what you were saying, Sandy.
Yeah. I thought you were gonna make a motion to talk about it.
No. No, I was making a motion to approve it and to move the meeting forward. I will speak to it. It seems to me that many of the conditions and statements that were made on the first waiver request apply to this one and as Mike pointed out, it's because of the size and because we know that we're going to add it to the final plan set, it seems like this should be granted.
Well, we voted to have the survey requirements put on the final plan set. Now, this would be a second waiver for the topographic contours, which are different, right?
Yes, and that's what the motion says, to have the topographic contours added to the final plan set.
Does any planning board person have a comment?
Sandy, this is Jen. Go ahead, Jen. While not requiring topographic contours along a full extent, this is a very large parcel. It's not an unusual waiver to get on parcels of this nature. The one item I will point out, and this could come with either topographic or some of the man-made features, there are areas of disturbance on the larger lot that are pretty visible from the aerial photo the applicant submitted. That does speak to some of the topography, even though it's been changed likely due to man-made activity, just to know the current state of the parcel versus the future. They will have to submit topographic detail with a further subdivision of Lot 27-3. So it's, you know, a condition that the current topographic features be on there, you get the detail that you would probably need for any further subdivision, but just bringing up that one sort of difference between that versus the survey.
Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to speak on this one?
Yes, this is Bill Gregzak again and the, as stated earlier, this information will be shown with the existing and the proposed contours for Phase Two, three subdivision. We do show the information for the other three lots. We show the soils, topography, the existing conditions that are out there. We're asking for a waiver for the contours from this one.
You're fading out. Okay. Any other planning board, then we could ask for public input? Okay. Jim, is anyone raising their hand that would like to speak on this one for the public?
Mr. Laporte?
I think you're muted, David.
No, actually, he isn't.
No, I can't hear him. He might have muted himself.
Okay. Mr. Alberti would also like to speak.
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Is that David?
No, this is Mr. Alberti.
Mr. Alberti, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, again, I just wanted to restate my sort of a similar position that this, you know, this parcel is perhaps the most impactful, or excuse me, this subdivision, this 27-3 would be the most impactful to so many different variables that I think it's very important that the public and the planning board have all the information and not grant waivers at this time because what you, in essence, is happening is they're, they're making, you know, they're, they're getting certain things approved without full consideration of the impact. So I think it's very important to have that information upfront and not have it be waived to a later date. And if I was under the understanding, Jen, Rowden basically said that this information is required and so I think it's important to be reviewed at the time of this consideration.
Thank you.
Mr. Laporte?
He's muted now, there.
We still can't hear you, Mr. Laporte.
I don't know what is, what the problem is. Ms. Jeffries would like to speak?
There we go. All right. My name is Lynn Jeffries. I am in a butter and I have a question, I guess. You're talking about whether or not you're going to do the waiver, but yet you, the information is supposed to be available on the final plan, so how is that waiving it? I'm not sure I understand because you gave survey requirements, but they're supposed to be final plan. So did we not waive it? Did we waive it?
Sandy, I think I can answer that. It's Jen.
Go ahead, Jen.
Yeah, so at the time of this application being submitted, they did not have all of the topographic contours for all four parcels. What they're asking for is a waiver from showing the topographic contours on the largest parcel or the full extent on the largest parcel in the time lag between when they submitted and, and now they now have that full topographic contours. So yes, they have asked for a waiver because the current plan set does not have that information. It's a little unusual that they now have it and could put it on a final plan set. So it's a little bit of an unusual situation. But at the last plan set, if the waiver is granted, they would put the topographic contours on the plan set. The planning board would then approve.
Okay, I, I guess since they have the information, I don't see why we are waiving the, them providing the information, is my personal opinion.
Thank you.
Mr. Laporte.
We still can't hear you.
Maybe he could send an email.
Call on the phone number?
Yeah.
Can he do a chat thing and type his question?
Sandy, this is Jen. I would not recommend having a butter submit comments via the chat feature.
Okay, thank you.
I, there's no way of capturing them.
Okay.
Can we move the question to vote on it then?
Actually, I have something to say.
Was that Mike?
No, this is Greg with Newton Properties.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just not, you know, if, if they have the information, I would just like to be, you know, apprised of it and have it provided ahead of time. It's, this is a, this is a big development for the town of Newton, and it's leading into a much larger, a very, very large development. And I think that all of this information is very pertinent to making decisions on this property. So I would see that the, I would like to see that the waiver is not granted.
So as Jen suggested, D from our regulation, D from our regulation says, "The board may grant a waiver from any portion of these regulations when in the opinion of a majority of the members of the board present and voting that A, direct conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and B, the grant of the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the ordinance. Fact is to be considered in whether a strict conformity of the regulation would pose an unnecessary hardship may include topography, site features, geographics, the board's familiarity with the property, size and magnitude of the project, unreasonable expense complied with the requirement, and the board's practice of granting waivers is not constituted as a precedent for further waivers either." So if we don't have any more discussion, I guess we can call the question.
There is still a, a butter with his hand raised.
Okay, one more. Go ahead.
That is Tom. Asking him to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. This is Attorney Tom Laporte. I'm trying to get through. Thank you very much, Laporte, letting go a third time. I appreciate your patience, and I've said this with regard to the first requested waiver. Nothing that has been presented by the, I represent if I didn't say so, but if you were butters, nothing that was him presented.
Excuse me, Tom, you're really cutting out. We can't hear you.
If I, if I could, Attorney McQuord, if you can turn the speaker off on either your phone or your computer, you would not get that echo.
Okay. Perfect. Okay. Is this better?
Oh, yes. Yes.
Okay, I'm using my cellphone. Okay, I'll be quick. I, I would have said this in response to the request for the first waiver, but as the applicant knows, and it's been around, and he's been around for quite some time, done this very often, the burden is on him to show you the justifications as set forth in the Newton subdivision regulations, and Jen Rowden recited them earlier, ten point one through ten point three. In fact, in ten point three, if you look, the applicant has to justify why it is a, is an unnecessary hardship. What I've heard is didn't have enough info. He's trying to save costs in paper. He's trying to provide minimum of information to the board, and a slight delay is really, it'd be, it'd be more convenient for us, more convenient to you. As a practical matter, everybody knows that this four lot subdivision is supposed to be adjacent to a thirty six lot subdivision plan. So the impact on this hundred and sixty six acres of this four lot subdivision plan ought to be known as well, particularly on the wetlands and soils. So if you go down, to sum up, if you go down the, the subdivision regulation waiver requirements, which again, ten point one through ten point three, and Ms. Rowden had recited the A through, I think there's, I think there's G, all, all of those requests and all of these requests must show how the, the waiver could be contrary to the spirit and intent of the ordinance, for instance, will not be contrary to the public welfare. None of that has been advanced at all. And I submit to you that the board take another look at that, perhaps, if it's possible. We consider the request for waiver on number one, if possible, and voted on it. And all the applicant, just like any other applicant, with exception, there was a reference to another applicant or, I think, by Collier, I believe, but no, no, no two lots of the same, everyone knows this is full of wetlands. And so we ought to know the impact of this four lot subdivision on the rest of the property with, you know, of twenty seven three. Now, I, I think the board needs full information. The board should, should act, and this has not met the requirement to satisfy a, any waiver under your own subdivision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Sorry you were cutting out there.
Sandy, this is Annie.
Hi, Anne.
May I make a statement? I'm, I'm kind of frustrated that this information is available, has been available, and could have been made a part of this. I, I, you know, I get that this has been something which has been here since February, and it's a long, long time, but, you know, they've got the information. I, you know, I'd really like to change my, my vote on the first one. I know it's already cast, but it seems to me the applicant really should have brought this information forward. I mean, he's got it. It'd be eighteen pages. It's a big packet, but that's, that's kind of the deal. I mean, it's a multimillion dollar property. It's going to be, I think it's going to be a huge, I'm very much in favor of seeing if we can't possibly have anything happen with this development because I think it's going to be really good for the town. It's been approved by the town for years and years and years. And I'd like to encourage the applicant to be very, very thorough with every single aspect of every application of every single part of this so that we can move forward and approve it or disapprove it with this information. So that's, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think you can take back your vote on the other one, but.
No, I don't think so either, but I wanted it in the record that, you know, I struggled with it.
We have a few more to go.
Yeah.
So I believe we have a motion on the floor, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, this is Mike Andrews. I do have one comment before we vote. On the previous vote, I was comfortable with that because the requirement talks about basically outside boundary. Once we move to the interior, which this one and a lot of the following ones are, to me, that's a different, that's a different story. So I'm much less in favor of this waiver because I want to know what is in this lot. There's a lot that's going on there or will be going on there. And as it has been mentioned, it seems like these documents, these surveys are available. I'm opposed to, to this waiver.
We're getting a lot of feedback, so could everyone make sure they're on mute if they're not talking? Sounds like a train or something. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mike. I think we've had all the butter's input, public input, so I guess we're ready to call this motion. Jim, can you read the motion again?
The motion is to grant the waiver with the requirement that the information be shown on the final plan set for the subdivision.
Okay.
Ms. Esther Book.
No.
Mr. Andrews.
No.
Ms. White.
Barbara, are you there? We can't hear you.
Sorry, I muted myself. No.
Mr. Foot.
Hi.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Ms. Collier.
No.
Mr. Sforza.
Hi.
The motion is not granted on a vote of four to three.
Sandy, this is Jen. Before you move on to the next waiver, you guys might want to do your motion about ending the, or not taking up new business if we go past a certain time.
Mike, you do it.
You have that down pat now. You've got the whole thing.
Yeah, except I don't have it written in front of me, but I will attempt, and Jim, maybe you can find it from the previous meetings. I will make the motion that I made at the previous meetings, and I will paraphrase for now that we will not take up any new business other than, than, what do we call it, our regular board business. After nine thirty tonight, we will attempt to finish any existing agenda items that are, that we are currently working on at that time.
Right, we open, we said we'd open and close them, right? Like, if we haven't got to it, we'd open.
Oh, yes, for, for legalities, we will open the remaining public meetings and, and then immediately close them and.
Continue them.
Continue them for the next meeting. Thank you.
Yeah. I second. It's Annie.
Okay.
This is, this is Jen, just, just really quickly, just so you know, your next meeting is not until September twenty second because of the primary voting on the eighth. Well, it doesn't have to be part of this motion. If you have consideration for having a meeting before the twenty second, you could continue things to a meeting before that, just as an option.
That is a long time away.
Oh, this is Mike. Maybe stay with this motion, and then once we get approached nine thirty, we can, we can reevaluate if we want to. For a new meeting.
Okay, can we, is that a friendly amendment?
There's no amendment.
Yeah.
No, that's not an amendment.
Okay. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. I guess we'll vote on it.
Ms. Esther Book.
Yes.
Ms. Collier.
Yes.
Mr. Foot.
Yeah.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Sforza.
Hi.
Ms. White.
Hi.
That's unanimous.
Okay, so we're on to waiver number three. From SR eight one five H, manmade features. The applicant is asking for a waiver from the section of the remainder parcel twenty seven three, which consists of one hundred and sixty four point six six acres and has no development proposed for the subdivision. This parcel will be subdivided later and the information provided at the time. Sheet five has been showing the existing conditions and manmade features of the parcel as it approaches Route one oh eight.
Let me, so since we have to show topographic contours on the property, one of my questions is at what level contours? Do I show every five feet or every two feet? What does the board want to see?
I believe that's in the, in our regulation, Jen.
Is that true?
Yes, Sandy. If you want a different level of detail, you could specify that, but otherwise I would, if I were helping to evaluate if that condition had been met or not, it would be to your regulations as current.
Okay, so right, you'd have to meet the regulation of that eight one five D.
Yeah, and that's, that's two foot contours.
Okay, no worries. We'll do that. Let me say this about that, about the next waiver, the manmade features. The manmade features on that parcel are some disturbed areas such as the existing access path that, or road, or whatever you want to call it, that goes through the property. That's, that's the only manmade feature that's on that property, so I'd like to withdraw the request for that waiver.
I guess he can do that, right, Jen? If you want?
Um, he, he can. The, the only problem is that the current plan set that's been submitted does not contain that information.
So then we're back to the same thing, right? Yeah.
I think it might, I think it actually might be clearer if you simply do what we've done with the previous due of requiring the full road, which it should show with the topographic contours realistically. But I think to withdraw the waiver at this point means that it would have to be supplied in an updated plan set anyway.
Yeah. I've, I've got to provide updated plans that, you know, requesting topographic contours. All right, so I got to show the gravel road in the, in the site and some disturbed areas. Okay, so I'll show that. I mean, it's part of the topographic survey. So at this point, there's no sense requesting that. And if you want to move on to the others, the utilities, there are no utilities on that site.
Well, excuse me, right now, we're just going to talk about this one. We've been doing one at a time. So, um...
So if you want to go back to man-made features, you could discuss it if you want, but since you're asking me to put on, to do a topographic plan for the parcel, I, I have to show the man-made gravel path anyway, so.
Right. So, right, if you read the ordinance, "Man-made features such as but not limited to existing roads, stone walls, pedestrian ways, and other structures." The plans should also indicate such structures that are to be retained and which should be removed or altered. I would think like, I don't know, does any ponds included or anything like that? It's considered a man-made feature?
No, there's no ponds.
Okay.
Yeah, there's wetlands, there's no buildings. There's a gravel access road that goes through the property and a couple of disturbed areas, and we'll show them, I mean, we'll show them on the plan. I mean, it's, you know, we're showing, yeah. I'm doing the contour plan, so I might as well do the man-made features plan.
I'd like to make a motion, Sandy. This is Annie. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the withdrawal of this waiver.
Well, we don't have a second, but I'd think it'd be better off just to vote no, because then he has to put them on the plan. He's saying he's putting them on the plan, so if we vote no on the waiver, he just has to do it.
Okay, then, then I'll change the motion. I'll withdraw that one and make a motion that we deny the man-made feature waiver.
Second, this is Mike.
Any other planning board input for this one? Man-made features? Jim, is there any Butters public that have their hand up?
Yes, I do.
Who's I?
Greg.
Greg. Okay.
Yeah, Newton Properties. Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's, it's very important that we show any man-made features on this property to show the existing gravel road that goes through and any other disturbed areas where they might be disturbed, whether they're like within the aquifer or wetland areas, just so it's just part of the plan so we can all see what's going on on the property. Thank you. Yep.
Okay. Are we ready to call the vote, then? Okay, hearing, no objections. Can you read the motion, Jim?
The motion is to deny the waiver.
For 81, whatever that number is? Man-made features?
Yes, it's 8.1.5.h.
H. Okay. Can you please call the roll?
Ms. Estabrock?
Aye. I had to remember what it was.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Foot?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Sforza?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Sandy, can we move on to utilities?
Yes, we can. I was just trying to find my spot. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to the utilities. It's SR8.1.5.i utilities. The size and location of all existing public and private utilities, including off-site utilities, to which connections is planned, and any underground storage tanks abandoned or in use. So the applicant is asking to waive this section for the 27-3, which consists of the 164.66 acres and has no development proposed on the subdivision. This possible later time and information be provided at that time. Any questions from the planning board?
I think we should approve this. This is Annie. I make motion that we approve this waiver for utilities. The applicant had said there aren't any, so it's kind of silly to have them have to draw some in.
This is Barbara. I second that.
I'm just thinking, where it abuts those other properties that have buildings on them already, aren't the utilities? So they're just not that close? Is that what they're saying?
Sandy, and this is Jen. They do have to show properties within 200 feet, and they have complied with that. Part of the utilities was actually showing some of the electrical lines, especially adjacent to Route 108. That was part of it. And if there are any gas lines in the vicinity, those were some of the utilities. They do show some of the septic and well locations on the smaller parcels, and the larger parcel does not have any utilities on the parcel itself.
Okay. Thank you, Jen.
Question, this is Mike. Do we know if there are any, as our regulation talks about, it's not just utilities, it's also any underground storage tanks abandoned or in use or anything such as that? And I'll throw that out to Greg when he speaks.
I don't know of any storage tanks that are out there.
Okay. Okay. Do we have any public input for this one on the utilities, Jim? Does anyone raise their hand?
Not at the moment.
Not at the moment. Any other planning board members have questions?
Well, this is Mike. I'm, I'm trying to struggle. I'm trying to figure out, you know, it's very easy as we go through these to forget about, you know, the reasons we have these and what unnecessary hardship is and, and as much, so. Right now, I see no reason to grant this, this waiver.
Well, that makes sense, because if there's nothing there, then they don't need to worry about it, because there's nothing to put on the plan, right? So why would they ask for a waiver?
Yeah, this is Greg, Newton Properties. Could you please clarify, like, that there's no utilities going into this subdivision or throughout this subdivision?
We are asking for a waiver on the Lot 27-3. We show the underground utilities, the well and the septic systems for the existing two buildings that are on, that are in the proposed subdivision, and there are no, there is no structure, well, septic, or electric, or telephone to the Lot 27-7. We're only asking for the Lot 27-3, not for this, not for the smaller lots.
Right. It's just got, to me, it's kind of funny. You'd ask for a waiver if there's not any utilities there, so you wouldn't have to meet the requirement if there's no utilities there.
Sandy, this is Jen. This is actually a question for Bill. Bill, are there no underground gas lines, electrical lines, especially with the three smaller lots? I understand the larger lot, there's not.
Yeah, we showed the septic easement on the Lot 27-3, and it does go through lots 27-6 and 27-5.
Is that easement just for electrical or for gas and electrical?
It's just for gas. It's the, the big gas easement that goes through the town.
So I know there's the big gas main that goes through town. I meant the utility easement that snakes off of Puzzle Lane next to the lot, 27-5.
Yep, there is, there is the easement, and I think I might have shown the gas, the underground utilities for electric and let me see. Yeah, we show electric and telephone on the where it exists on lots 27, 5, and 6.
Sorry, I put myself on mute. Okay, so I guess we're ready to vote on this one? There's no other comments?
There is a public comment.
One public comment? Okay.
Hello, John Sukru, and I'm sorry if I'm out of order again, but we are talking about wells, and I just do want to remind everybody, our well for the sixth unit is on that property. Or next to it.
Mr. Sukru, we're still on?
Utilities.
Utilities.
Right. However, Mr. Sukru, you own the apartment building on 108 across from the fire station.
Correct.
We're still, we're still on the earlier public hearing.
Okay.
There are three more public hearings before we get to the fire station.
Okay. All right, so should I, no disrespect, should I not even be participating?
You can participate. I'm just letting you know, we're not talking about the water at your property. This is at the other end of Route 108.
Okay, all right, because as long as we all know, the well is on that property and there's an easement.
It is possible we won't, we'll just be opening that and continuing yours until our next meeting, because what time is it?
It is 8:24.
Oh, oh, it's still early. Okay.
Okay, I'll just sit back and listen. I just wanted to make that aware that our well is, I mean, we have six families that would be affected if something happens. That's, that's really my biggest concern.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so Jim, if you could read the motion, please, for this number four?
Attorney Russen still wishes to speak?
Sure.
Hi, Attorney Laporte, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Again, I'm the Butters attorney, and I'll be very quick, I promise. What I heard, and maybe Mr. Greg Sack can correct me if I'm wrong, was that there were, were no utilities out there. When he was asked if there was any underground storage tanks, he did not know. That's what I heard, and it's, it's not this board's job to determine that. The petitioner has to state fully the grounds for the waiver and all of the facts relied on, by the applicant, which is 10.3 of your own subdivision regulations waiver requirement, so for that reason, I, I only, I think that they haven't met their burden. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jim, can you please read the motion for number four, utilities?
The motion is to grant the waiver as requested.
For SR8.1.5.i?
Yes.
Okay, please call the roll.
Ms. Estabrock?
No.
Mr. Andrews?
No.
Ms. White?
She's muted. Barbara, you're muted again. All right, sorry, yes.
Mr. Foot?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Sforza?
Aye.
Five to two in favor.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to number five, SR8.1.6.a. Plan scale. So the applicant's asking for a waiver of this section for the remainder of parcel 27-3, which consists of 164.66 acres and has no development proposed for the subdivision. The remainder parcel presently fits on one sheet at 1 inch to 300 feet scale as opposed to four sheets at 1 inch to 100 feet scale. The parcel will be subdivided at a later time. The scale drawing will meet Newton's subdivision requirements.
I'd like to make a motion, Sandy.
Sure.
I'd, I'd like to move that we deny this waiver. I want to see the, I want to see the detail, particularly when the topographic information is added.
I'll second that. This is Mike.
Okay. Any discussion from planning board members? Or any questions to the applicant?
Well, this is, this is Mike. For this, I can't find any hardship whatsoever that would give us a reason to approve this.
If I, this is Bill Greg Sack. If I could just say, I have to agree with denying this waiver request, because I have to show two-foot contours and trying to show two-foot contours at 1 inch equals 300 scale. It'll be very confusing, so I have no problem drawing on that 1 inch equals 100 scale.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the public?
Attorney Laporte? Has his hand raised?
I did not need to. Let me take my hand down. I apologize.
Okay. Any other comments from planning board members? Not hearing any? Could you read the, call the motion?
Ms. Estabrock?
Could you read the motion first?
The motion is to deny the waiver.
Okay, I just want to make sure if we're denying the waiver or approving the waiver. So the motion is to deny the waiver?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. For 8.1.6.a.
Correct.
Okay, please call the roll.
Ms. Estabrock?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Foot?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Sforza?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. Can you scroll me up to number six? Thank you. Okay, so... Okay, so number six is SR eight dot one dot five dot K. With no typos in that one? I didn't find it in my book.
No.
Yeah, that's pretty good. Soil info, this is the applicant requests soil information from Soil Conservation Service published date or where high intensity soil maps are used. It comes to conversion to a soil series map done by certified soil scientist. The applicant is requesting relief of this section. The proposal is for the subdivision of four lots. Two lots have existing buildings on them and the remainder parcel will have 164.66 acres. The remainder parcel will be subdivided later date and this information will be divided then. Any comments from the board?
Yes, this is Mike. Actually, this is a question for Jen. Is there something between what we have, which is very little, and the high intensity soil maps? Because I know that we can, you know, we are granting a waiver or denying a waiver, we can, you know, do something in between. Are there, because what I need to see, I'm not getting from what we have. Is there a legal type of soil map in between those two that can really show me not only where the wetlands are, but the type, the category of wetlands?
So there is the general hydroxic soil overlay that could be put on. They've already done a wetland survey, so actually, when you get the more detailed topographic contours, you'll actually be able to see that. There is this county-based soils, but honestly, it's not really great for site-specific work. Granting a waiver to the high intensity soil survey for this large of a parcel, I'm sorry, for the larger parcel, not for the smaller three, I actually do think would be a very reasonable waiver to grant, given that at this point, they are not proposing to build. The next iteration that we may see in a few days, I would not recommend that as a waiver, but for this particular parcel, for the bigger one, a high intensity soil survey would be a very intense process to do when there is no septic system being proposed.
Right, so on the, the survey requirement that we're requiring, that we talked about the first waiver, does that give us anything other than the basic outline of the wetlands?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Jen, this is Sandra. I have a question. In our subdivision regulations, eight dot three dot three, it's minimum lot size. Do we use these calculations to determine by soil type how big the lot can be?
Correct. That's why they provided them for the three smaller lots. A lot of this size, or I'm sorry, the largest lot could certainly handle one septic system somewhere on that lot. That's the only reason at this point, I don't think a high intensity soil survey on the bigger lot is really warranted. That's really what that lot sizing is getting to, is can those soils handle a septic system?
Wait, but I'm considering like lot size, too. Like how many acres, yeah.
Yep, no, that's exactly. And the, of the three smaller lots, they two already have septic systems and the one existing is large enough to be able to accommodate the septic system per your regulations.
Okay. What about that other smaller lot?
The smaller lot as well. It meets your minimum lot size requirements.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, anyone from the public have a hand raised?
Ms. Gonyer?
Hi, I have a question regarding the regulation. It states that calculations shall be provided and shown on a sheet appropriate to the plan, I'm sorry, the part before it. A site soil, soil survey of the entire site or the portion as determined by the board. Is a waiver even necessary if the board has the ability to say, you know what, just give us site survey of, say, what square yard, for example?
Lisa, this is Jen. It's a much cleaner process for the applicant to request what portion they do not want to perform the soil survey on. And then the waiver request effectively accomplishes that.
Okay, so my follow-up question is, is what makes this waiver not a permanent waiver?
Let me clarify my statement before the brief. I would only recommend that the high intensity soil survey on the largest lot in this portion, which is what they're asking for, that would be reasonable, because if they, in a subsequent application, come back to subdivide, then I would recommend the high intensity soil survey. Okay. So for, for just the subdivision, not for any subsequent subdivision, yes.
So to clarify, if we voted yes for this one, when they come back with the subdivision for that other one, they'd have to provide the high intensity soil maps?
Correct, unless they ask for a waiver subsequently with that one.
It's gonna, again, they use, they'd have to use those to figure out their lot size, so.
Yep.
Probably they wouldn't get that waiver.
Sandy, I'd like to make a motion, please. This is Annie.
Yes, Annie?
I'd like to move that we approve the waiver for the soil conservation detail of SR eight dot one dot five dot K.
Thank you. You said all the numbers.
Yeah.
Who seconded?
Steve.
I seconded you, Larry.
This is Mike. I'd like to, whether it's a friendly amendment or clarification, to make sure that this is applying only to lot 27-3.
I think in the, right in the waiver, it says, the last sentence says, the remaining parcel will be subdivided at a later time, and this information will be provided then.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that
Okay.
we know that the waiver is only for that. So I know we already have the, the information, or I believe we have it for the other, the other three lots, but I just want to make it clear.
Right, so, yeah, right, this is for the, only the four lot subdivision. Okay. Does the applicant have anything to say?
No.
I didn't mean to leave you out. How about the public?
Attorney LaPointe?
Yes, thank you. I just have a question. My understanding of a, this type of high intensity soil survey is to show soils types and drainage as well. And maybe Jen or someone with better knowledge than I in this area can confirm, but is there a concern that this board should know about as far as drainage, insofar as this small four lot proposed subdivision is also over that very large aquifer that serves as drinking water for so many different residents and budding communities as well? And I was thinking there may be some runoff that may be problematic if, depending on the drainage, so that's just sort of a question and a concern. Thank you.
Jen, do you have anything to add to him?
Yeah, I will say as far as drainage and infiltration, the two existing buildings did have to comply with the stormwater regulations at the time that they were built. The two lots that are currently undeveloped with this proposal, if and when there is a proposal for those, they also would have to comply with septic regulations as far as hydroxic soils and also any stormwater runoff that would go into the aquifer or the wetlands. So drainage is a concern, but given that there's no infrastructure being proposed at this point, there is no change to the current drainage on the sites.
Jen, I have a question. This is Mike. On, you mentioned the two existing buildings complied with stormwater regulations at that time. Would they comply with current stormwater regulations?
Likely not. Your regulations have gotten significantly stronger because of the MS4 permit requirements. I don't know the exact year these buildings were built, so I couldn't tell you offhand what they had to comply with.
Okay, so they comply to the time they were built, but it does not comply at the, at the time that they're asking for this subdivision.
Correct, but that does not mean that they are, they are legally still complying with the regulations at the time.
Correct, yes.
Right, the two lots that have no buildings will have to meet the current regulations.
Correct.
Any other input from anyone?
Well, this is Mike. Actually, this one and the next one, from the way I look at it, actually, because we're talking about a very large piece of land and this appropriately, these two more apply to test pits and individual septic systems. I'm comfortable with that it meets the hardship requirements.
Okay, thank you. We have to vote on separate, though. Don't forget.
Oh, yes. I just like to keep muted as long as I can.
Okay, if there's no other further input, we'll call this question for this variance, number six, SR eight dot one dot five dot K. Jim, can you read the motion?
Move to grant the waiver as requested and to stipulate that this applies only to the remainder of lots one dash fourteen dash twenty-seven dash three. Ms. Estabrock?
Aye.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Foot?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Sforza?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Thank you. Moving on to number seven, SR eight dot one dot six dot C, test pits. The applicant is asking for a waiver from this section for the two lots with existing buildings, with existing septic systems, and for the remainder parcel 27-3, which consists of 164.66 acres and has no development proposed with this subdivision, and parcel 27 dot three will be subdivided at a later time, and this information will be provided at that time. Any comments from the planning board?
This is Mike. For this, I'm comfortable for the, the large lot 27-3. I am not comfortable for the, the two smaller, the existing lots, I believe by my reading of it, they're trying to waive it for for all of them. You could clarify that for me, maybe. So the two buildings already have existing septic systems, so they don't have to be part of this. I don't want it to exclude the, the lots that do not have a building on it.
Jen, could you clarify the test pits? Would they be just for the septic systems or test pits to determine soil type? Jen, we lost you.
She stepped away for a moment.
Okay. Does anyone else know? Jim, do you know?
Yes, this is Bill Gregzak. Test pits are dug to determine suitability for a leach bed system. There's two, two factors, the pound of Newton that we have to address. One is the NHDES subsurface requirements and the pound of Newton's requirements are a little stricter. We already have septic systems built on two of those lots. On the one, on 27-7, we do show the proposed test pits, I mean, the test pits in the area of our proposed septic system. And at this point, we don't show any test pits on lot 27-3, but you know, it's proposing a septic system at this point.
So on which page of the plan would the test pit show for the 27, what'd you say, seven? Seven?
If you go to page sheet four.
Sheet four. I take it the test pits are those two little black and white circles?
Yep, yep, and they're labeled TP1, TP2, and on the left side of the page is test pit data. They were inspected by Robert Leverone, your town health officer.
Okay. So I think that clarifies that we are just speaking of the remainder of the 27-3 that contains 164.66 acres.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Did that satisfy you, Mike?
Yeah, I think so. It's a problem trying to save paper, and I'm still trying to find the test pit location on 27-7, but I believe you that it's there and it's not in the, the wetland soil boundary. I just can't find it right now. So, yeah, as long as there's a test pit for that lot, we don't need them where the two lots already have septic systems, and I don't think it's necessary on 27-3. So I think that's what the actual wording of the waiver says, so thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Any other comments from planning board? Jim, is there any public people that have their hand up?
Not at this moment.
Not at this moment?
Sorry, Attorney LaPointe?
Okay. Go ahead, attorney. He must be on mute.
Yes.
I can't hear you.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you. My understanding about these test pits is to determine the water table levels. Is that correct?
Yes, yep, it's to determine the estimated seasonal high water table and the the rate of percolation of the soil such that, so when you design your septic system, you know what the elevation to put the bottom at and, and the percolation test that you do essentially how, what size of bed needs to be.
Is it, it seems to me that even though two more buildings and perhaps one or two more septic systems might not have an effect on the quantity and the ability of the aquifer to recollect water, but it might have, the leach field, wherever it's going to be put, might have an effect on the quality of that groundwater. So is it really an unnecessary hardship that requires you not to provide these test pit data? And obviously, I don't think it is, and that's my thought on it, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Sandra, this is Barbara.
Hi, Barbara. Go ahead.
I think that as, because there is no development considered on this large portion of this lot right now, I don't think that test pits are necessary for right now.
Thank you.
And this is Mike. Just one comment. I think it meets hardship. A lot this size having to do a test pit, you know, we require that for building lots, and we know for the hardship right there, number five, size magnitude of the project being considered, and the board's familiarity with the property, and whether this information would significantly help us in its review. So I actually think it meets a hardship requirement for this one.
Sandra, this is Barbara.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we grant the waiver from the test pits for lot 27-3 at this time.
I'll second that.
Okay, I was just rereading the regulation. So like, as I read it, it would be, because it's only one lot at this time, he'd only have to dig two test pits 50 feet apart, because at this present time, he's not splitting it up into additional lots. When he decides to split it up, then you'd have to do the test pits for each lot, I believe. So we're only talking two test pits, really. That's all.
Yeah, this is Greg from Newton Properties. Is Jen back on yet?
Yes, I am. What Sandy stated is correct.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to hear your input on that. Thank you.
So I don't think it's such a hardship that he can't dig two test pits.
Well, I'd like to say, if I could, Sandy, this is Annie, that the hardship that I see is that they don't even know where the buildings are going to go for sure or what they're going to do, so it'd be digging a couple of test pits for no purpose, except just to, I mean, that's the hardship, is that it's just, you know, they're pointless until there's a building proposal.
Okay.
Well, I think it would be pertinent to figure out where the buildings are going and do the diligence to dig the test pits in accordance to where the building is going.
Well, I think, like we just stated, when they do to further subdivide those lots, they'll have to do that. At this point, there are, it's only one open area of 160 something acres, so for this full lot subdivision, there's no buildings at this point on this plan.
Yeah, this is Mike. Basically, if we require him to do this, we're saying, do you think you can find a place to have two test pits and a successful perk test somewhere, anywhere on this 164 acres? And that's why I think it meets the hardship clauses. Even though this expense is minimal, it's kind of an unreasonable expense, because that's why we require the test pits and the perk test, is to make sure a lot is buildable. And we know, it doesn't matter what we think's going to be happening with this property at this point right now, it's just, could one, could this be one house lot with one septic system? And I think it's not worth anybody's time. The next process, yes, he'll be required to do a lot of them.
Correct.
Sandra, this is Barbara.
Yes.
And they have done the two test pits for 27-7. So for that other smaller lot there, they have done those test pits.
Yeah, we talked about that previously.
Right.
And they do show on the plan. So, Nuff, do we have any other input? I'd like to call this waiver to vote.
Ms. Gonyer?
Ms., oh, go ahead.
All right, I have a question. So if this waiver is done, the lot has been subdivided into this 164 acre lot, does that mean that they can then just, potentially not saying they're going to, apply for a building permit and build a building on that land without having to do these test pits? Because without putting in a request to subdivide, just building, say, a house, a single family with a septic? Because can't they do, can't any property owner do that now with a lot that they own? They can go to the building department? They don't have to go to the planning board to build a house?
Lisa, this is Jen Rowden. For a single-family house, you are correct. For a non-residential structure, they have to come back before the planning or for a site plan approval. They would have to do it then.
All right, I just wanted to make sure that was clarified.
Yep.
Yeah, this is Mike. Jen, just help me on this. I'm pretty sure if they went in for a building permit, they're still going to require, maybe not from the planning board, a designed septic system from a licensed, state-licensed septic designer, which would include a perk test.
Correct. Correct.
Attorney LaPointe?
I just, yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
I just want to say before the board closes this agenda item up that, having served on a board myself in another town, I don't know of any law that precludes the planning board from moving to reopen the first waiver request for reconsideration. If you did do that and the vote ended up being different from what the vote is now, and it's not allowed, it simply would be null and void. And certainly, the town's attorney, Southern Calman, is very good. I think it's worth a question to him, because I think that that item is is pretty important. Thank you.
Sandy, this is Jen. They are correct that you guys could do a vote to rescind the previous vote if you wanted to.
So, does that have anything to do with the test pits that we're talking about now? Should we wait and talk about that after we vote on this test pits?
Could we do that? Could we call this?
Right, because we want to finish this one first and then, right. So I guess if there's no further questions on this question about the test pits, Jim, can you read the motion?
The motion is to approve the waiver. Ms. Estabrook?
Yeah.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Fort?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Sforza?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Is that the last waiver, or do we have another one? For the procedures?
There were two waivers that were submitted earlier.
At the beginning, yeah.
That were submitted with the original application. One was for, to waive the requirement for the subdivision regulation under Appendix A item Roman numeral 2C1AX, and that's the planned requirements for erosion sediment control. And the other one was a waiver of the fees.
So I'd like to ask the applicant, are those still waivers that you're looking to obtain?
No, we are not looking to obtain those. There is, with this subdivision, there is no proposed construction. There is no roadway. Nothing is proposed. The only lot that is proposed to be built on is 27-7, and that will be dealt with in a site plan. The application has been made with the drainage calculations, erosion sedimentation control has been made, but nothing is proposed with this. No construction is proposed with this subdivision. The and as far as the application, I think at the last meeting I had asked to withdraw that. I think what we had asked for was just an accounting of the fees that have been either returned or what has been spent with the with the monies.
So Jen, is that enough just to take those off and say they no longer require those?
Yeah, Sandy, the, really, the first one that dealt with the sediment and erosion control, I agree that they are not doing any construction. It really had to deal with the soil service data, which, the high-intensity soil survey. You guys have effectively already dealt with that waiver request, so a withdraw statement is fine. And if the fee one has been withdrawn, that's the applicant.
Okay. So I believe we're done with all the waiver requests for this application. Everybody clap. Don't fall asleep. Okay. So now, seeing that I knew at this, do we take up the application itself at this point, the whole thing?
Well, we've already taken jurisdiction of it, so I would like to move that we continue it to our next regularly scheduled meeting, because there are some waivers that weren't granted, and there's some information that needs to come in from the applicant.
Sandy, this is Jen. Just a question, really, for the board. At this point, if you wanted to do a site walk, you could schedule one. You've taken jurisdiction. I do understand there's some information that's going to get added to the plan. And one thing I do want to bring up that I think I had mentioned at the last meeting is the 65-day clock with jurisdiction. That is normally the standard, is that when you take jurisdiction, it is the 65-day clock. Because of the state of emergency via the governors, that actually, that timeframe has been suspended. I would recommend the boards try to stick with that 65-day clock, because it does serve a purpose, but legally, you do not have to. So if you're going to do a site walk, this might be a good time to try to schedule it, because it'll, people can go out and see if that's something you're interested in doing, and just the 65-day clock, because we're in the state of emergency, actually does not apply.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we do a site walk. I, myself, have never been out on that parcel.
Madam Bysshe, there's a motion on the
Oh, sorry.
To continue to September.
Well, we haven't set, we haven't set our date yet. We talked about doing that later.
Okay.
Did anyone second that?
No, nobody has yet.
I thought we were going to, excuse me, this is Barbara. I thought we were going to continue it to the next scheduled meeting. I think we can't schedule it until we talk about, if you're talking about it, extra meeting.
We can't talk about it to talk about it.
You could, you could schedule it to the 22nd if you wanted to, because that is a scheduled meeting. You could also schedule a site walk if that's something you're interested in.
Okay, so I'll amend the motion to be, to continue this till the 22nd of September.
Thank you.
Barbara, I'll second.
Discussion on the motion? Is this one we can maybe put in that we'd like a site walk?
I would do that in a separate motion, Sandy.
Separate motion, okay.
Okay, so I think you just answered my question. This is Mike. I wanted to make sure that we can still talk about a site walk after we voted to continue this to the next meeting. That voting to continue doesn't shut off debate on this at this point.
No, because at the site walk, it is literally, you go, you see the site, there is no public testimony taken. It is a public meeting, so the public can come, but no decisions, no votes can be made. I suggest people stick together. The board should not be debating anything. Questions can be asked, and there should be minutes taken.
Yeah, my question was that, once we continue, we can still talk about the site visit. But that's, it was just administrative point of order thing.
Okay. So hearing no discussion on the motion to continue to the date that Annie said, can you call the question, Jim? The motion?
Okay, move to continue to September 22nd. Ms. Estabrook?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Fort?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Sforza?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay. So now I'd like to make a motion that we plan a site walk for the four lot subdivision.
Do you have a date, Sandy?
Oh, I don't have a calendar. Let's see. I don't know, I guess we can have that as part of the discussion, what day is good for people. I'm not sure of people's schedules. I mean, I know I work, so probably the weekend is better, because it's starting to get dark sooner. Did someone second my motion?
I will, I will second the motion. This is Jen.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion? Does anyone have a date, like, that's better or worse? Mike, are you there?
I'm out of town, so I'll be unable to attend. This is Annie.
You're out of town for the rest of your life, or, you know?
I'm out of town, I'm out of town until the end of September or possibly early October.
Oh.
At Old Fishin Cottage.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Mike, do you have a date, or Barbara, or anyone?
I, this is Mike. I have a lot of flexibility.
Okay.
I'm open.
You could do it this weekend on either Saturday or Sunday?
Okay, I don't have that much flexibility. I will be
Time to do our notice, too, right? Because don't we have to notice the site walk?
You only need to notice it 24 hours.
And then notice, okay.
Okay, the following weekend is Labor Day weekend. That is the 5th, 6th, 7th. Election Day is on the 8th. So you have the 12th and 13th.
That would still be before the September 22nd meeting, so that would give time for everybody to plan.
I vote for the 13th. This is Barbara.
I'll second that.
Okay.
As far as the time, does the applicant, like, I don't know, have any? For us?
We're fine. Whatever, whatever works for the board will make work.
Okay.
So we're at your mercy.
On Sunday mornings, I do shopping at 6:00 a.m. I'm done at 7:00.
Is that, is that the date Barbara said, is Sunday?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I don't have my calendar here. So, I don't know, if people are early risers, is 10 o'clock too early before it gets too hot? I mean, well, September, hopefully, it's nice, but the other thing, would we do it rain or shower? rain or shine, should we set a rain date?
I think, this is Mike, 10 o'clock works great, and.
Bring an umbrella if it's raining?
Yeah, and we can set a rain date if it's extensive for, say, a week later or something, but.
Okay.
Do you wish to make that as a friendly amendment, that the rain date would be the following Sunday?
How about the following Saturday? That's the 19th.
Yeah, I guess. That's fine. Well, that luck will rain, seeing that it hasn't rained all summer. Okay, so the motion is for a site walk on Sunday, September 13th at 10:00 AM, for the four lot subdivision.
With the rain, with the, with the rain date of 19th, right?
At the same time, 10 o'clock?
Yes.
Okay. Jim, can you call the motion?
Ms. Estabrock?
Aye.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Foot?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Sforza?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I believe that ends our first item on our agenda, correct? Jim, can, can you bring up the agenda? The next item? Okay, second item, 125 Development Corp. of Plasto, New Hampshire, requests a public hearing for a design review of a 36 lot subdivision, South Main Street, 108 Newton, New Hampshire, the property assessment has tax map, 14 block, one lots, 27-3. Jen, were you looking for something from this application?
So, this application is merely a design review, which means any comments by the board or from the applicant are non-binding, so there is effectively no vote to be made. You guys did declare a regional impact, my office is the Regional Planning Commission, got notice of the regional impact declaration, and our regional impact committee chair directed the staff of the planning commission to simply write a memo reviewing some of the potential impacts of, at a regional level, this development may pose, we did not, I'm sorry, we did not hold a public meeting, in part because of having to do things virtually, but if and when there is an official subdivision application on this, which it sounds like we might be getting imminently, if the board, if either Newton or Plasto were to declare it a project of regional impact, my office would then schedule a meeting, the applicant would be invited to attend and present representatives of the towns that are impacted, which is primarily Newton and Plasto, would also be able to come and speak, and then they would conduct a meeting where they would go through some of the potential impacts as well, they would also look at our staff review of either the design review or the final application. This memo that was sent to the Newton Planning Board from my office was also sent to the applicants and to the Plasto Planning Board, I believe it is also posted on your town website, I can go through it if the board would like me to briefly, but that's up to you guys.
Would the board like Jen to just hit some highlighted points, or just let everybody can read it on their own?
I'd just assume we read it on our own, unless the applicant would like to hear any of these things amplified.
I think we're fine, we received your memo, and it's pretty much what we had anticipated. So, we're good.
Do you have any other comments you'd want to say, or is that good for today?
I have, I have one, Jen has brought up several times the 50 foot, you know, minor versus major road feed width, and that kind of thing, I think she's brought it up at least once at each one of our last three or four meetings, I guess that's going to be something which is going to come up, I don't know how it could be addressed, I don't, I don't know that we could, that it would be fair to say that it has to be 60 feet when there isn't 60 feet, and it would basically cut off the applicant from being able to do anything with 164 acres, so, you know, to me, it's going to be something we're going to have to address, and it's obviously going to be something that the applicant's going to have to show us how they can make it work. I don't know, and I'd like to know, would the state DOT be involved in that, or not?
Annie, this is Jen, absolutely, they would be involved, they will almost certainly require a traffic study, and they will also require some of the design of the intersection.
Okay, thank you.
But, but as to getting into the 50 versus 60 feet, they will not get into that at the local level.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess, as far as I'm, my point of view would be, we can't determine that till we know exactly what the applicant has in mind, whether it's a, you know, feeder road, a collector road, or whatever those criteria were for the type of road it's going to be, so I don't think we can predetermine, you know, if that 50 feet's enough, depending on, you know, what they're going to put out there.
Yeah, this is Mike, we know that 50 feet's enough for, for a lot of different designs, it may not be enough for what this design review is showing us, but the 50 foot is plenty for other things, not, maybe not quite as intensive, so to say that you can't do anything with it is a little disgenius.
Right, and, I mean, they still have the backside too, you know, or they're cutting themselves off from that other access on the other side, from what puzzling exists now, so.
So for what we have now, is it, are we even in a position to just continue this to the next, to the next meeting, Jen?
So actually, I would recommend that the board hear from any abutters, just so the applicant can hear from the abutters, but if there's, unless the board has other comments, I don't really think there's a need to continue the design review.
Okay.
No.
Right, okay, if no other planning board have questions, we could ask the public, Jim, is anyone's hand up?
No one's hand is up, the applicants from Junction Trucking are asking that they not be pushed off to the 22nd.
Okay.
Actually, I take that back, attorney's report.
Did raise his hand?
Yes, he did.
Okay.
Your favorite attorney, I'll be brief, I think that, we all know that this 36 lot subdivision is, and would be confirmed when the subdivision plan is proposed, but it's going to include more than 30 buildings, more than 30 wells and septic systems, which most likely will affect that aquifer, its quality, its quantity, its re-collect, so I was heartened to hear, meaning encouraged, that the same sort of waiver treatment may not occur with regard to this 166 acres, every lot on that 166 acres doesn't need a few variances for some deviations, but they're going to require variances that do not preserve the spirit of the ordinance, in fact, cut deep into the residential areas and buffers into woodlands as well, and I'm sure you'll hear more of that in the future, but as part of the final part of the design review, I just wanted to state the opinion of quite a few abutters on their behalf.
Thank you.
This is Mike, Mike Andrews, two questions, the, what's up on the screen right now, have we received a copy of that?
Yes.
We have, okay, it looked somewhat familiar, but then I saw some other things, okay, and then I'll restate what I said last time, just for the applicant's benefit, as we go and leave the design review is, and I know it's been mentioned by a couple others, the existing design review, I think, is way too intensive for this piece of land on top of this aquifer and where it's located, I would like to see, get into the real proposals coming in, that the applicant would be asking for a minimum, and I mean a minimum, of variances, so hopefully that can be, can be put down on paper.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, Mr. Ravencraft has his hand up.
Go ahead. I can't hear you.
I'm trying to find him.
Oh.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I don't want to take too much time away from Junction Trucking, but our lot, we own two of them in a sliver of land that's a 49 feet, you know, goes in between for the access to the 39 or 37 lot subdivision, whatever it is, I'm really concerned with the queue of traffic coming in and out of the subdivision during, you know, the beginning of the day and the end of the day, is going to cut off our access, and also just the, the safety factors of coming in and off of 108 into the land, and we can discuss this further, but I just want to give the rest of time to Junction Trucking, so thank you.
Yes, thank you, that's a good point, I hope the applicant takes into consideration safety factors when they are designing this, and like you said, access in, access out, mocking of roads, you know, different types of things like that, I wouldn't mind seeing those options all on the plan, too.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm not able to raise my hand, I am on butter, can I have a comment, please?
And your name, yep.
My name is Steve Beck, I am the butter, I just want to state for the record that I believe that the dimension for the access to 27.7, it changed from 49.9 to 50.3, but that is yet to be certified, so how are we able to proceed forward, talking about whether the access available, and they don't even meet the 50, it's not certified that they even meet the 50 foot requirement, it really probably should be 60, so I'd like some feedback on that, when that yet has been certified by a stamped drawing, thank you.
This is Greg with Newton Properties, I could speak to that, our attorney's actually having that surveyed here shortly, and we'll, we'll be able to speak to that, you know, in later review periods, and actually provide comment and documentation to the town of Newton as needed, thank you.
Thank you.
Jen, I can answer the previous applicant's question about the 50 feet, the original plan that came in for the subdivision we were talking about previously, did show frontage on a little of 59.97 feet, they have subsequently had it resurveyed, and now it does say 50.03 feet, that has not been stamped by a land surveyor yet, as very standard, if and when we get to an approval on that subdivision, a land surveyor stamp is required for recording of any survey, so that would have to be done at that time, and presumably that subdivision would then be rolled into this new proposal.
If I could interject a little bit, and add a little bit to what Jennifer said, our survey is actually based on a subdivision plan that was done for the property that is owned by Newton Properties LLC, where that plan clearly states that our frontage is greater than 50 feet, and those bounds were set according to that subdivision plan, done for those parcels, and those boundaries were located by our surveyor, and he's, you know, his stamp is on the plan, we just didn't have the signature on the plan, so there is a plan on file at the Registry of Deeds, that clearly shows that it was stamped by another surveyor, that states that it is over 50 feet.
This is Sandra, are there any markers on that, that possibly during our site walk, we could look at that, where the markers are?
We will show you all the pertinent information out, yep, we'll make sure that they're available.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, in addition to that, this is Greg, can you hear me?
Yes, yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, okay, yeah, sorry, so it's kind of, it's on a curvature, the area is right there, of the easement going through our property, so if you measure straight across, there's a certain dimension, and if you measure the curvature, it's going to be a little bit longer, and so the measurement straight across is actually what we're having actually surveyed at this time, you know, because that's what the criteria requires, is a straight across measurements for the exact width, not the curvature of the property markers, and we're currently having the property markers surveyed, because at this current time, there's only one marker that is in, and we can't actually tell if it's one bound, or, there's actually like three bounds there, there's, there's one bound, and then there's another bound, that's just a couple feet away, and then there's actually a metal marker also, but we'll have that information for you guys shortly, thank you.
If I could also add to that, I'd like to correct the gentleman's statement, where he claims that that is an easement of his property, that is not an easement, that is property owned by 125 Development, there are two parcels, and he owns two parcels, and both of those parcels are on either side of that property, it is not an easement.
There's no correction needed.
Kind of breaks it.
No, 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 I'm sorry, but we have a perpetual easement, it's not his easement, he's correct, it is his land, but we have a perpetual access easement across the both, because our land, you know, on both sides of his, so again, sorry for that, he's correct.
Right, you have to cross that to get to your other parcel, so should that show in the plan, that perpetual easement, it doesn't show on this plan?
So Sandy, for the design review itself, easements are not required, there are very little things required for a design review, for any subsequent subdivision, it would need to show it, if there is an easement, I don't believe it is shown on the four lot subdivision you have before you.
Okay.
Mr. Alberti has his hand raised.
Oh, go ahead. Hello? Go ahead.
Yes, I just want to inquire if the walkthrough was available for the public as well?
Yes, it is. The site walk on the 13th? Correct, public is invited. Okay, I guess we can close this, I think, we decided we didn't need to continue the design review, correct?
Right.
And then? And there's no other comments?
So Madam Chair?
Oh, yes, go ahead, Larry.
Just to let you know, it's after 9:30, so we got to make the decision now.
Okay. So after we close this one, we can talk about what we're going to do next.
Sounds good.
So Jim, was there a motion on the floor?
No.
No.
Do you need a motion to close it? I'll make a motion to close it.
No, you just declared the public meeting closed.
Okay. And then this is off our agenda for the next time, right?
Right.
Yes.
Correct. Okay. So I would like to declare the public hearing closed for the design review of the 36 lot subdivision on South Main Street.
Thank you very much, Sandy.
You're welcome.
I'll take over.
Roger's back, I can go get a drink of water.
Okay, and as Larry noted, it is slightly past 9:30. And you did make a motion that we were going to not start other public hearings after 9:30, but like you also indicated that you may want to revisit that. And what is the feeling of the board at this point?
Well, I wonder if we can take them out of order from the agenda.
Sandy, this is Jen. You guys could. I would recommend going in order, just to be fair to everybody involved.
Okay. Just thinking about how long, so how long, right, so what are everyone else's opinion? It's 9:30. Do you want to do one, two? Those are the items we'd have to work on. John Kelleher of Newton first, then the town of Newton about the lot line adjustment, and then Junction Trucking would be after that, and then board business.
I don't, Larry, I don't mind doing one and two. Mr. Kelleher's been waiting for a while. That lot line adjustment, is that for the old fire station? We actually need to discuss, we need to discuss that because that's in the process of a sale, and I'm not sure what this guy is looking for. So I wouldn't mind doing two more, and then we just cancel the rest.
I'm sure the person at Junction Trucking doesn't want to be continued either.
Roger and Sandy, this is Jen. I think the next three, it will take probably a little while, but I think we could probably get through those this evening, if people try to be concise with comments and procedures.
So is there a motion to continue, to override the earlier motion to stop at 9:30?
I'd like to make a motion that we continue our meeting for another half hour and then revisit it at that time to decide where we are.
Is there a second?
Second.
Jim, will you call the roll?
Give me a second. Mr. Hamel?
Aye.
Ms. Estabrook?
Aye.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
My apologies, I'm not looking at the right list. Mr. Foote?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Yes.
And I'm not certain who is still a voting member, whether or not it's.
Mr. Forza.
Okay. Mr. Forza?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. So I will move on to John Kelleher of Newton, New Hampshire, request for a public hearing for a minor site plan, village district at 1 South Main, Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as tax map 11 block 6, lot 7. Mr. Kelleher, would you like to speak on the changes to your plan?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, this is Sandra Estabrook. I'd like to recuse myself from the board for this item.
Okay, in that case, I will appoint Ms. White as the voting member for this item. Mr. Kelleher, would you like to speak on your changed plan?
I have provided all the information that was required by the board, trying to make this concise and brief, so that we can move on. I provided the board with all the paperwork that was required and requested, and I'd like, I'd like to be approved as of tonight.
Jen, do you have comments on the plan?
I did review Mr. Keller's plan. I apologize for not getting written comments to the board, but just because of the timing of everything, it didn't work out. I do have very strong concerns about the parking that Mr. Keller has proposed. In my original review, I did recommend that a condition of any approval be that DOT, a driveway permit be granted, because this would be a change to even his residential driveway because of an additional use, that a driveway permit or statement that nothing needs to be changed be approved with any condition. I think because of the, both the driveway itself may be okay, the parking on 108, I do not think that DOT will actually approve. So because of the parking on 108, I think there is still a safety and access concern. I also have a few questions, a couple of things about how sort of waste was going to be dealt with on the site and any signage. I didn't really see detail provided regarding that, so if Mr. Keller maybe could answer some of those questions.
The signage was provided in some of the drawings, and I believe we also addressed the waste, which is less than one bag at the most per week.
I'm not seeing where the signage is located on any of what was submitted, but it's possible I missed it.
Mr. Chair, have a question.
Go ahead.
So this is Larry. So he's not, he's not actually building a new driveway? He's just allowing his visitors to park on his grass, which would it require a new driveway permit, or he's off the state road?
Larry, that's not, I understand it's an existing driveway, but by having a business, a non-residential business, that's a change to the driveway's permit. So it doesn't mean he would have to change his driveway. He needs to get a new permit to verify that that driveway can handle the admittedly handful of cars. It's more of the parking that is more of my concern.
I don't think he's using the driveway. He's using his yard, his grass, the grassed area. Is that right, Mr. Kelleher?
That is correct. It's just more of a parking on the grass thing. If the, if, Jim, you could go through some of the photos. One of the handmade photo, I believe you'll see, pull forward. It provides the distance of the parking and where additional parking is, and exactly, exact, no, it would be three from that one. 58 feet to the house, 23 feet to the driveway. We went out and measured everything as it's supposed to. There you go. And you'll notice that there's even one that says a hand washing station, waste can. So we addressed that, and I believe one of them might have just one flag. We're not using anything more than just one flag, and it's going to be attached to the telephone pole on the grass.
So Roger, this is Jen. I just have a question for clarification on the drawing that, Jim, can you go up to the next drawing? Where it has the parking, and then it also, I'm sorry, it might be the one right above that. It also has an arrow regarding what seems to be heading into parking. So the parking would pull in and back out off of Main Street? Is that what you're proposing? Or are they going to use your driveway to go in or out?
The driveway is not used for in.
But it is used for out. Is that correct?
It could be, it could be used for out if they feel that they don't want to back out, back into the, back into the road, which of course is basically like stopping at a yard sale, stopping at a flea market, or, you know, somebody selling something on the side of the road. You'll notice on the next one, the next one down, Jim? No, I'm sorry, two from that. So one more. You'll notice that right there, it says the parking is nine feet per space with the waste can, hand washing station. It does say exit, but it also gives them the opportunity that if they needed to back out, they can back out right onto 108.
Yeah, I have a real public safety concern about the parking that close to the intersection. And that's something I just can't get over. I think that you're much too close to the intersection to, because how far is it from the tree to the street, to Highland?
Which tree?
The tree closest to Highland, to Highland. How far is that?
We didn't measure that. I would have to say that's somewhere in the vicinity of four, maybe 40 feet.
Roger, question, Larry?
Yeah.
So if you ever been to the general store on 108 in the Ottawa, at Rose Corner, all those guys back out of, into 108, they all do. They pull in, nose first, and then they back out right on 108. So it's not, it's happening all over the place.
What to get to send forth in here, this is Jim White. Could you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Okay, I live very close to that intersection, Highland and 108, and I've seen so many near accidents from people backing out on the 108, that that should be just discouraged or made illegal. Somebody's going to get killed there one of these days.
I would have to say, could you be more specific when you say people backing out into 108?
Yeah, they're coming right out of where your driveway is, right into traffic.
Oh, so you're saying that people backing out of my driveway?
Yes.
Okay, well, you specifically stated that area, so.
Well, actually, anywhere along there is equally dangerous. Same, it's the same around on Highland, if you're getting into, getting on the Highland from that corner.
And basically, everybody in town backs onto either their main road where their driveway is located, or they back into some sort of a way to get out of their driveway, whether it be a small little section or whatever. I don't feel that, I don't think that you're correct in your assumption of people backing out into 108 is, at my house, is correct. I'm the only one who drives from this area, so I don't think that if you're, unless you're just saying that I'm dangerous and I'm a bad driver and I back into 108 purposely.
Actually, I live down on Bear Hill Road, just south of where Amesbury Road takes off, and that whole area down there is now full of 18-wheelers that are coming by at about 70 miles an hour, and believe me, it's dangerous.
Okay, but that doesn't mean that you're, but what you've said is, you've said and stated on the record that I am a poor driver and backed into 108, and it's dangerous for me when I do that. Did you? Yes, no?
No, I did not say that. I said you're not, I said nothing about your quality as a driver.
You said my.
For anybody to back out on the 108, almost anywhere along there. I've seen so many near accidents at the 108 general store doing that. It's scary.
This is Mike, I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Mike.
Thanks. Yeah, I share some of the concerns with the parking. The other thing is, I'd like to ask the applicant, what type of soils are we looking at there? Typically, when you have a business, the ordinances don't allow just parking on grass. What kind of soil is there? Because right now, I know it's been very, you know, drought, so it's nice and dry, but what's that going to look like during mud season?
Well, to tell you the truth, I never really take care of my grass, except for maybe mowing it when it's really, really high, and I don't thatch my yard, so it's very, very strong. I've never had, I drive on my, on my yard all year long with all types of vehicles, and I've never had any type of mud near where they're going to be parking. I've had mud on the edge where the Highland Street and 108 meet, and that's only because the state of New Hampshire does not take care of that area and digs up all of the grass, I mean, digs up all of the dirt that goes from that corner. Other than that, I have no mud on my yard at all.
Okay. Have you reached out to the state yet about what their requirement's going to be for this?
Well, I did not because they, because we're not going to make a separate driveway or a drive-through, when originally I did talk to the gentleman at Station 6. He, when I asked him if we could make a drive-through, he said that wouldn't be feasible and it wouldn't be able to be done, only because there's too many permits that needed to be done and measurements that needed to be done, and he didn't feel that we would be able to make a drive-through at that area.
Okay, because I know, as Jennifer mentioned, this, you know, by changing the use of this, it's no longer just residential, it's business, so that the state will be involved, so I recommend talking to them as soon as you can, so you're not, you don't have any unpleasant surprises.
Well, you can't make, are you saying you can't make the residential driveway commercial? Or vice versa?
That's correct. It's a change of use. So they may, just like Jennifer mentioned, they may say, oh, it's fine, but it's a change of use, which requires that they look at it.
Yeah, I don't want this, but I don't want this continued until next month. I mean, all this is, is a hot dog cart. If we need to change the parking to where it was stated on one of my drawings, so that it's in front of the house, per the board, we can do that. I don't think that this needs to go on another month. I believe that I've given the whole town everything that they required or needed in order to make this approval.
John, I have a question for you. This is Annie.
Yeah.
Is it okay, Roger?
Yeah, go ahead, Annie.
Would it be possible, since Jen has expressed that you might have difficulty with the, with the state as far as parking along on 108, would it be possible to move your parking up to the side of the house on the, you know, the same side as where you have the hot dog stand? And to have it right there, and then people could back up and drive out frontwards?
Give me a second to get my pictures again. In my first picture, Jim, you'll notice that it says additional parking, head-in parking. Is that what you're talking?
No, I'm talking, I'm talking on the side of the house. You go up the driveway to where the hot dog stand is, and where the house is, to put your parking nose in right there. You have the trailers back there, but before the trailers to have the, to have the nose in parking, so that you're not parking out on 108, you're parking up by the house and by the hot dog stand. Is that clear?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Are you saying? Are you saying that the hot dog cart can stay where it was on picture number three?
Yep. Just put, just put your parking nose in right, right in that same area where your hot dog stand is. So it's up by the house rather than down on, down right off 108.
Well, I did have in picture number one, I did have additional parking, so I can just change all my parking instead of, oh, that's three, if you can go to one, Jim, that would be great. Right there, you know, it says additional parking, you know, heads-in parking. Instead of, if the board doesn't like the approval of where I had my parking right near the cart, we can have that, the additional parking area right there to be part of the, basically all of the parking, and then it's a walk-up. There's not gonna be any tables for people to sit on, so there is no restroom needed. But if the, if they, if the board feels that I should change my parking to the additional parking area, I'll be glad to try to do that.
Roger, question, two things.
Go ahead Larry.
Apparently Ziggy got locked out, he can't get back in, so Jim, can you check on that? He's trying to get back in on the call. And number two, question to Jen. So if this was just without the hot dog cart, if he had company over his house, he could park the four or five cars on his grass and they could exit via 108 or Highland Street with no issues? The problem we have is-
That's not completely true, Larry. DOT does not allow parking along state roads like that. They could certainly use his driveway and park on his lawn if it's just a residential use.
So, question, my son-in-law lives on Highland Street, which is a state road, and when we have a party over there, we have twenty cars on his grass, and we all back out of, onto Highland, so you're saying that's illegal?
I'm saying that the state does not allow parking on state roads.
No, we're on his grass, we're not on a state road.
If you're with it, if, then you're on his property, that's outside of the state's jurisdiction. But that's a residential use, that is not a business use.
Well, that was my question, so the parking issue is because it's a business use, not a residential use.
Correct, that's what changes the need for an amended driveway, and then having the parking going in and out of the state road as a business use would likely not be permitted by DOT.
Excuse me, Roger, may I ask a question? This is Barbara. Yes, in looking at this sheet where Mr. Kelleher was showing for additional parking, wouldn't that be the same as where he showed it over there? Because they would still be coming out, backing out onto 108?
No, I believe that, I believe the issue was the closest to Highland Street is the dangerous parking part of it, and so that's what they were saying. So if I moved, if I moved the parking over seventy-five to a hundred feet over to in front of the house where the additional parking says, that would not make it as dangerous as what they were originally talking.
Okay, thank you.
I really would like to have the board give me permission, as long as I make the additional parking area where the people can park and walk up to the cart approved if possible. Is there any discussion about that?
Well, we, have we taken jurisdiction of this?
No.
No.
All right, I'd like to move that we take jurisdiction of this application.
Second, by Larry.
What does that do, please Annie, this is John.
It means that we can then make a decision on it.
Thank you.
Okay, Jim, call it roll.
Mr. Hamel?
Aye.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Foote?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Sforza?
Aye.
Unanimous.
No, I'd like to make a motion, please, that we approve this application with the stipulation that he work out the parking in a manner that's going to be compliant with what is gonna be needed by the state.
Annie and Roger, this is just Jen, you guys have not opened this up to the public. You need to have a public hearing.
Oh, sorry. I'm used to meetings, sorry about that, I'm used to meetings where you discuss after you make your motion. Sorry about that.
So, if this was on the agenda for tonight, why wasn't the part of the public hearing on the same agenda?
It is.
It is, the notice of the meeting is the public hearing. It was also, it was also, yeah, now you can start the public comment, you've accepted jurisdiction.
Okay.
After you do that, which you voted to do, then you do public comments, then you can do a motion to approve or not approve.
Okay, I apologize then, so we'll do the public.
So does anyone in the public want to comment?
Yes, this is Sandra, Esther Brooke.
Correct, Sandra.
I'm not speaking as a board member because I can't, but this, I believe, is the first time the board has possibly done a village district conversion of a residential to a business. No matter how small this business is, it's still now a business, not just a residential. So we have some rules you're supposed to follow, so one of them, because you've been mostly talking about parking, so that's Section 23.1, and it's M. Says that parking within fifty feet of the right-of-way and all parking should be located to the side and to the rear of the existing or any proposed buildings.
Yeah.
So therefore, that's another reason why they shouldn't park by the street, and then the two, it is very unsafe and possibly, like you said, the state won't allow it. So I think, I don't know, someone had said possibly come up the driveway further and then pull over to the right, and then you're not by the road. As, you know, that might be helpful.
Sandra, can I ask a question, John? Did you, did, what you were just reading, did it state building?
Yes, it says side or rear of all existing or proposed buildings.
So that basically doesn't apply to this because it's a hot dog cart?
No, but you have a building there.
I have a residential building.
Right, and like I said, your residential is now, like, the whole area is now a business.
Not necessarily.
Well, I'm not gonna argue that because I can't vote, so I'm just, that's just my comments, thank you.
That would be for the board to decide.
And that was one of the issues that I brought up last time. Your proposed parking still doesn't address a lot of issues. And I don't think it's appropriate to approve without, until we have a defined plan. And for that matter, you probably should also get input from the state before we approve it.
Roger, question?
Go ahead.
So we're gonna stop the general 108 store from parking in front of their-
Their grandfathered in.
Hey Roger, this is Mike, I have a comment.
Go ahead, Mike.
There seems to be some confusion of missing the point here. There's a difference between a new business, which this would be, and an existing business, which is the existing store down the road. There's a big difference between an existing residential house and then a change of use that makes it a business. Even though this is just a small hot dog stand, by changing it to a business use, it changes the entire property to a business. And I think we need to remember that, you know, yes, it's an existing residential right now. It's being proposed to change to a business. We have to look at the same, whether it's a hot dog stand or any other business that was there. And I think we, we're missing that point because we're trying to fit something in here that maybe doesn't fit in here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments from either the board or the public?
I have one more comment to Mr. Kelleher, so if it doesn't pass, maybe you should just have a cookout and ask the donations and you're not a business.
I think I did that, I think I already did that.
I have, I have, I have a comment, this is Annie.
Not one member of the board showed up.
This is Annie, I have a comment. I would really like to see the parking, I'd like to stipulate that the parking be up on the side of the house or in the rear of the house. I think it isn't proper for neighbors or anybody else to have the parking for the business out front, and that's why the rule is there. So I do think we ought to stipulate that. I think from what Jen said, it sounds like the state would probably want that as well in order to grant the driveway use as a business. So I'd like us to approve this with the stipulation that the state approve the driveway and that the parking be on the side of the house. So that's my motion.
Is there a second to Annie's motion?
Second.
I heard Larry, somebody else spoke too?
Yes, Steve did too.
Oh, okay. Any more conversation or discussion of the motion? I just personally think it's premature without a plan of where the parking is to approve it and say, oh, yeah, he can get them, make it look all right without us seeing where it's gonna be. And I have a real concern about the parking.
Roger, this is Jen, just as a, what can I say? A recommendation that the board also require that the applicant provide an updated plan with showing the location of the parking. I understand Annie's intent is to do that, but that it actually have to be supplied to the planning board office?
And a written approval from the state of whatever it is.
Correct.
This is Mike, I'd like to make a friendly amendment, and I think because this is a fairly low cost, I know we do this with other types of businesses, not particularly this type, but I would like to put a one-year review, so this permit would only be good for one year, and then it would be reviewed.
Can it be a calendar year?
I would like to see it through all four seasons, so it would, my recommendation, it would start, the year would start when you start. So if you have a, have to go for a while before you can get your permits from the state, you know, but whenever you started, then that year would start.
Jen, is that something we can do?
I would, I would really not recommend doing a one-year granting of this. You could have a stipulation that the, Mr. Keller come back before the planning boards to review, or Mr. Keller must meet with the police department to review any issues regarding safety with his traffic configuration after one year. You could do something like that, I would not make him come back before the planning board.
What, this is Mike again, what do we do with, I know we use this with gun dealers. What is it, I'm getting to that, so what is it that we actually stipulate one year out for a gun dealer?
Effectively that there are no complaints.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead Jim.
If I may, with gun dealers, it's actually, we're suggesting that to the Board of Selectmen. The planning board doesn't have the power to set a sunset on a gun dealer, but the Board of Selectmen put that in their stipulation because the Board of Selectmen signed the firearms permit, not the, not the planning board. So we, they don't come back to us, they come back to the Board of Selectmen.
Right. Who issues the actual business?
So Mike, will you withdraw your friendly amendment?
I will, I still think there's something that, I could see this opening up a lot of can of worms, but I withdraw it, doesn't seem like it's practical. My other comment is, no matter how much I think the applicant really wants this, I think this particular case is completely against the spirit and intent of the ordinance.
Roger, this is Jen, just so Mr. Keller understands that if, if this motion passes and he gets a conditional approval, it is just a conditional approval. He would not be able to start until he had that, the parking redrawn and the DOT driveway permit, or a statement from them that he does not need any amended driveway permit. He wouldn't be able to start until those had been satisfied.
I understand that, but does it have to be at a meeting?
No, it's just if you meet the conditions of approval.
So I can bring all of this thing to the planning board office, so to speak, and then I should, let's say it's all passed, I could then get a letter from the board saying it's fine?
Correct.
Yep, do that, okay.
Any other comments from the board or the public? Jim, will you read the motion and then call a roll?
Actually, I'd like a little bit of clarification, Ms. Collier?
Yes.
Ms. Collier moved to approve the application with the following condition, and that is to stipulate parking be up at the house. You want to give me some clearer language, because up at the house?
I didn't actually say, I didn't actually say up at the house, I said at the side of the house.
At the side of the house. Okay, requires state approval for the driveway?
That's right.
And to show the parking on a new sheet with written approval from the state. There were those three conditions.
Yes.
Do you want me to call the question?
Yes.
Mr. Hamel?
No.
Mr. Andrews?
No.
Ms. White?
No.
Mr. Foote?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Collier?
Yes.
Mr. Sforza?
Yes.
Three in favor, sorry, four in favor, three against.
Thank you very much, that closes the hearing for John Kelleher.
Mr. Chairman, this is Steve.
Yes.
I have to sign off for the night.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much for attending.
Thank you.
Roger, this is Jen, you guys have also gone many minutes past your half an hour extension.
Yeah, so what is the feeling of the board, are we gonna continue the next two?
Mr. Chairman, if I may? Mr. and Mrs. Pullman, who own Junction Trucking, have asked since they, they have been, their application has been in the works for quite some time. And it is putting, according to them, it is putting a hardship on them financially because they are renting, they are paying rent into places until this can be approved. They asked if we would continue, if the board would continue.
If the board would can, oh, continue meeting, not continue.
Right, right, and, and hear, hear their application.
What is the feeling of the members of the board? That the next item on the agenda is the Town of Newton's lot line adjustment.
I think we need to hear, I think we need to hear that one and that's the last one.
This is Mike, I'm in favor going forward. I think that the next one of the town, it looks like for me, the application was, was complete and on and order. I don't think that will, will take very long.
And Junction Trucking, Trucking may not take too long either.
Yeah, that looks like.
We should do both of them.
Very complete, so I'm, I'm fine with, with continuing. If, if it gets ridiculous on Junction Trucking and we have to then decide to change and continue, we can, we can decide to do that then.
Okay. So Sandy is back as a voting member on the board?
Back.
What? But now I will appoint Barbara to take the place of Mr. Sforza who had to drop off. Okay, so you, you, you all set with that general booth voting members?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so next item, Town of Newton requests for a public.
Your voice is really breaking up there.
All right, is it still a problem?
Well, it's, it's okay, just, just speak up a little bit more, I guess.
Either that or I can try calling in, but it might, it'll get started. Okay, so the Town of Newton requests for a public hearing, lot line adjustment between, 35 South Main Street, Newton, New Hampshire. The property is references tax map 12, block one, lot 11 and 13. Who's representing the applicant?
I'm here tonight, Charlie Zilchamis, CC and Associates.
Okay, do you want to make a presentation?
Sure, this should only take an hour or two, so I'll get right into it. Thank you for hanging in there tonight, I've been kind of falling on all night. But yeah, hopefully this will be real quick for you. I'll just give you a quick overview and then any questions you might have, just feel free to ask. Here on behalf of the Town of Newton for their lot line adjustment, as you mentioned, affecting two properties. The intent of the proposal is to adjust the lot lines between tax parcel 11, which is the old fire station, and tax parcel 13, known as the Peanut Trail. Tax parcel 11, it's 0.74 acres in size, has 203 feet of frontage on South Main Street. The lot's zoned commercial and supports the old fire station. The fire station is served by its own site, own onsite septic system and water supply. As you can see from sheet two, which kind of gives you a little bit of detail of what we're doing here, a portion of the existing structure and all of the entire septic system and some of the building utilities encroach upon the abutting Peanut Trail property 13. The parcel is also subject to a water line easement that you can see on there. That runs from parcel 12 where there's a, a public water supply that benefits lot 12 dash 6 dash 1 located across the street, the condominium units. As for the Peanut Trail, lot 13, that's the former Boston Main Service right of way, now serving as a recreational trail. And it's also access for a fire pond with the Town of Newton, as you can see, plotted on the plan as well. It contains 10 and a half acres, has 83.7 feet of frontage on South Main Street. The parcel runs all the way from Woodyer Street, all the way from Woodyer Street and then from where we are now, and the entire site is within the residential zone. The only known encroachment within the subject area of this lot line adjustment is from a building located on parcel 11, 5, 24. And that encroachment is recognized by a 99-year license deeded by the Town of Newton. So that little bit of encroachment is captured by a deeded license. So the proposal, quite simply, as you can see on the plans, again, if you could look at sheet two, is we're gonna propose to take parcel A, which is 0.08 acres, that'll be conveyed from parcel 13, which is the Peanut Trail, and added to parcel 11, which is the fire station. And what that does, it places the entire building within the lot as well as the improvement serving the building. The Board of Selectmen wanted to maintain at least a 50-foot width through the Peanut Trail. So there's just a small 10-foot septic system easement that has been provided to capture that existing leach field. So again, that parcel coming from the Peanut Trail, hopefully encompassing all of the building, the majority of the utilities, and we just left a little bit of easement should they need to replace their septic system. The second parcel, parcel B, as you can see in the back, that's 0.12 acres, that'll be conveyed from 11, the fire station, to 13, the Peanut Trail. And that merely just places a large portion of the existing fire pond within the Peanut Trail lot. So the town will have full access to that without any sort of, uh, easement. So ultimate goal here is, as I'm pretty sure you're all aware, is the town wants to sell the commercially zoned fire station and we want to get rid of all the encroachments, eliminate those and have everything accounted for within easements that might be without or outside of the, the property lines. No state approvals here, just a simple lot line adjustment between the two town properties. Any questions?
That was a lot, thanks for not taking an hour.
This is Mike, I just have one question and I, I, I don't think it's gonna be anything, but I'm just looking at the, the water easement going across the street with the, the two wells. Do you know anything about the condition of those wells and what any impacts uses current, past, or future on the, the, the fire building could cause to them? As a, do you know, like, what does drainage look like and things like that?
Well, I do know that, that believe that well that serves the condo units is still active and is still recognized. That easement is, that was off record plan, we were able to locate it very accurately so we know exactly where it is and where it's plotted across the property. So I still think that serves that condominium unit. As far as the other well that serves the fire station, you may notice there's one also behind the fire station. I believe the one behind the fire station is the one they're using for their portable water supply. Maybe that other one that's on lot 12 is an older well. I'm not sure of the status, but it's still, it's there, it's, hasn't been filled in and is still property of the, the town.
Okay.
I, I could, I can explain more on that if you like.
Sure, a few words would be nice.
Back in, back in 2008 when we had the ice storm, the apartments across the street lost their power and they're not on the generator and their water supply to firehouse. So when the firehouse was open for 11 straight days, we had no facilities for cleaning or going to the bathroom. So after the ice storm escapage, we actually got a grant to do that other well across at the fire station and we cut ties with the building across the street. So there are two separate wells. The one at the fire station, probably, I want to say 2014 or 13, maybe we got that. So that's the deal with the two wells.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, um, this is Sandra, I have a question.
Go ahead, Sandra.
That lot 12 dot 1 dot 12 that has the, um, wells on it, that is owned by the condo association? That piece of land? Is that correct?
No, I think, I think their pipes went under 108 Sandy and tapped, tapped into that well across the street.
Right, well, see, yeah. It looks like the lot itself is past the property line of the town and then the, the easement's that dotted line, correct? So then it comes back into the town's property, then down across, but so my question is, who owns that 12 dot 1 dot 12?
That's J and J Enterprises, which I believe is also the owner of 12 6 1, let me take a quick look.
Yes, I, I, that, that is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it is.
So when, if the town sells that, that easement will stay as it is so that, like whoever buys that property, the condo will still have, be able to use that easement and run their pipes there?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
This is Carly, um, I am in a butter and I just have a quick question.
Go ahead.
We received a notice that we're a butters for this land, but we're on Catherine Way off of Woodyer. I assume that we just received the notice because we have bought the Peanut Trail, not that we actually bought this property.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we, we made sure we noticed entirely, I mean, all the butters in the entire length of the Peanut Trail.
Awesome, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we take jurisdiction of this application.
Is there a second?
Second.
Jim, will you call a roll?
Okay, Mr. Hamel?
Aye.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Foot?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Don't forget me, Jim.
Sorry, Ms. Estabrook.
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Okay, are there any comments from the board or from the public?
Roger, this is Barbara, I'll make a motion to approve this lot line adjustment.
Okay.
Second.
Before we vote, Jen, are there any stipulations that we need to add to this?
Nope, other than it get recorded at the registry of deeds on a Mylar, I think you are good to go.
We'll set the monuments as well, we, I've already talked to Charlie about that, we'll take care of that.
And that probably should be in, in the decision to, to, to say, set the monuments in to deliver the Mylar.
That, that, those are both standards, they're boilerplate for the NOSA decision.
Right. Any other comments on the motion? If not, Jim, will you call a roll?
Mr. Hamel?
Aye.
Ms. Estabrook?
Aye.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Foot?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
You hear me now?
Yep.
Thank you very much. I will move to the next one.
Thank you.
Junction Trucking Incorporated requests for a lineup on the central site plan, changing use at 185 South Main Street, Newton, New Hampshire. The property is references tax map 14, block 1, lot 24. Would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Uh, yes, first of all, I'd like to thank the board for sticking in. I know it's late, I, I, I understand, I get it, I'm on the planning board here in Merrimack, Mass, across the border from you. We are, um, look, we are seeking a occupancy permit for 185 South, 185B South Main Street as well as permission to park two pickup-style trucks as well as a couple of appropriate snowplows for those vehicles. I did provide a, um, a couple of drawings as well as pictures. We are an RV transportation company, although it says, you know, our name is Junction Trucking. We do not have 18-wheelers, and I know that's the first thing that people think about. We haul trucks with pickup trucks, single-wheel and dual-wheel pickup trucks. We transport RVs from point A to point B, we deliver for several of the local dealerships in the area. When people buy campers, we go and pick them up at the dealerships and then deliver them to the campground, sometimes to people's residences. We also do retail deliveries from point A to point B. And we go out to Indiana and pick up trailers at the factories and deliver them to said dealerships. We are not a trucking company by normal thought process where you would envision 18-wheelers. That is not in our scope, our business plan, in any way, shape, or form. On the drawing there, we've put in a 60-foot by 20-foot area behind the shed that houses, I think, the refrigeration, refrigerators for the, um, the Flaco's tacos that's on the, on the property there. And that's where we propose to park the pickup trucks. And again, with a couple of snowplows, that's within a fenced-in, currently fenced-in gated area. Um, and then our office is also depicted within that building, approximately 360 square feet. And again, we're, um, looking for an occupancy permit for that as well. And I think that's about all I have unless you folks have any questions.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
So I have concerns with 185 South Main not in compliance with life safety codes for that whole building. As far as occupancy permits for the landscaping business that's in there now, the gated area with his three 1,000-gallon propane tanks that have to get annual inspection and the fire lane being blocked in the rear with a dumpster. Until they come up to, to code, I, I would suggest to put this on hold. I don't know who the owner is. But, uh, that's the situation over there. They, they allow that landscaping company to move in. It was reported to building, it was reported to the owner, and still nothing has been done about it.
Roger, would you like me to continue or do you guys want to discuss what Larry just brought up?
So why don't you continue, Jen?
Um, my only comments on this application were effectively that the use is allowed for your zoning district, it is a change of use. I would recommend the planning board determine if it meets the minimum site plan requirements for review as a change of use. The only other condition I would recommend is that the applicant, I guess it should be that no tractor-trailers are permitted on that site that are associated with Junction Trucking, which is stated in their application. So their trucks they're proposing would be okay, no tractor-trailers. That's it.
Okay.
Roger, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Sandra, I have a question. Your business is now located in Merrimack. Are you planning on registering your vehicles and changing your business address to the Newton address?
Yes, that is the intention.
Okay, so do they have to become a business or just because they're occupying that, their business? I'm not sure of that.
Well, we, we supplied the Secretary of State for. Well, we, we supplied, um, the Secretary of State for, um, um, member in good standing from the Secretary of State of New Hampshire, as well as Massachusetts. We are already a registered business in New Hampshire.
Okay. I was just wondering if you're planning on registering those trucks as, with a Newton address?
Yes, that is the intention.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, Roger, this is Barbara. May I speak?
Roger's muted.
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
Jim?
I, I do not see any hours of operation listed on here unless I'm missing it. I remember putting him on the application, bear with me.
In, in the meantime, Jim, can you unmute 2515?
Is this working?
Yep.
Good.
Does she just need to know the, the, the hours?
Do you, do you need, just need to know the hours of operation because I can give those, I could have sworn that it was somewhere. I don't, I don't see it on here, yeah. I would like, we would like to know what hours, because we need to approve that. Okay, um, yes, absolutely. She's, I could have sworn, I remember putting them in. Um, so it's, um, eight to four, Monday through Friday, eight to noon on Saturday, it closed on Sundays. Um, and, and to be quite honest, um, when we're working, obviously, I'm on the road. If I go out to Indiana, then I'm working 24 hours, I could be driving through the night. Um, that would have no, um, that, that would have nothing to do, um, with the property, obviously, at 185 South Main Street.
Okay. I have a question, please.
Go ahead.
Okay, Roger?
Yes, go ahead, Annie.
Okay, um, with the things that Larry was saying, I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding what some existing issues have about some other occupants of that property and what impact that would have on this application. Uh, can you, can you explain that a little bit, Larry? I just don't get it.
Sure, so that's, that's, that building is all one unit. You have loss and tax in there. You have another company that's on the right-hand side who I believe was told doesn't have an occupancy permit, and I don't know the name of the company. And then you have the landscaping business who's storing, uh, flammable material in that garage. Anytime a new company comes into a building, into town, they need to do what this company's doing, come to the planning board, get an occupancy permit. Well, the landscaping business just moved in. Um, they put up that gated area, which is half blocking the fire lane, blocking the underground propane tanks from the fire department, getting to them, and they put the dumpster in the fire lane in the rear. So until those violations cleared up, I'm voting no, and if the planning board chooses to vote yes, then it's going to go to the state fire marshal's office tomorrow. And it's not against this company, it's against the owner of 185 South Main.
Thank you.
May I speak?
Really, that, that violation has nothing to do with application.
Absolutely, absolutely, Roger, absolutely.
Roger, this is Jen. I, so the only can, so I, I do understand what Larry's saying about concerns about occupancy. I would recommend, um, an occupancy permit be a condition of approval of this. Um, that does need to go through life safety review. Um, that doesn't really deal with some of the adjacent units, but.
Yeah, he, uh, Jen, can you hear me? I'm sorry, this is Greg with Newton Properties. We own the building there, and I'm sure that there's some people on the teleconference here that can confirm that, uh, the groundscape company that is one of our tenants has gone through this process and does have a minor site plan that has been approved to be on this property and gone through the process, along with loss and tax service, and us in addition to that. So I'm, I'm confused, I'm confused where this is coming from.
So I will say, I do recall that there is a minor site plan that was approved for the landscaping company. The status of their occupancy permit, I can't speak to. Um, but concerning this application, the planning board, and this would be a very typical condition of any approval like this, would be a, um, occupancy certification, which can allow for life safety inspections.
I'm, I'm sorry, can you like reiterate? So what, what are we, what are we looking at doing here? Because w- we need to get a life safety, what?
That, just getting a certificate of occupancy, which if that requires going through a life safety walkthrough with the fire department to sign off on that occupancy permit, that's part of that process. It would be a very standard thing, whenever you have a change in a tenant or a use in a building.
Oh, yeah, definitely. We've, we've done that. We've had the chief buy, and I'd welcome him by the, you know, our property anytime. That's, that's, that's done already. This gentleman's simply trying to park two pickup trucks and two plows as a tenant at our property and, you know, have a 362-foot, square foot office there.
I guarantee you, I, I guarantee you, Roger, that the fire chief has not stepped foot into that building for life safety, uh, inspection.
I don't dispute your comments.
This is Mike.
That must be, that must be Larry there disputing this? Is that right, is that correct? Just, just wondering, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I just didn't catch who was just, who was, uh, brought that up.
Correct, that's Larry.
Okay, all right, yeah, thank you, Larry.
Roger, this is Mike. I have a comment, please.
Go ahead.
Um, I think the best way to handle this and have some of these things, uh, looked at is move forward with this. Uh, I think this is a meets minor, uh, site plan, minor impact, and move forward with this, make a contingent on receiving an occupancy permit, and then as the applicant goes to the occupancy permit, uh, as they're doing everything correct, they will meet with the chief and these issues will be addressed. I think that's the best way and probably the fastest way to get any of these, uh, outstanding issues at least, uh, looked at.
So are you making a motion to determine that this is a, uh, qualifies as a mi- minor site plan?
Uh, yeah, I was trying to figure out which order of everything is, uh, yeah, I would, I would make the motion to that. I think we do that before we take jurisdiction, or do we take jurisdiction on these ones?
I would do, the minor first is fine, and then take.
Okay, so I'd make a motion that declares this, uh, a minor impact.
My second, Sandra.
Okay, Jim, can you call the roll?
Yep.
I gotta talk to him before they do that.
Go ahead, say something, Roger.
Roger, this is, this is Jim White. Yes. Um, before you go signing off on anything that contains 3,000 gallons of propane, you better think twice about it. Uh, I've worked with that liquid hydrogen all my life, and propane's just as bad, and this stuff makes a really big bomb.
All I can say is just, I, I, I just, I can't believe, I, this is just, this is just amazing, what's going on here? That's, that's all I can really say.
Because where, where is this 3,000 gallon of propane?
We have a, we have a.
3,000 gallons of propane in that, in the gated area, that's where they are.
Yeah, and that, and, and it's certified, obviously, because we get it supplied to our, our office building by the person that fills it up every time we get it filled up. And they wouldn't fill it up if it wasn't certified in, in compliance, and it was on our site plan.
Jim, if you bring up my aerial photo that I supplied to the planning board office, you'll see the propane tank that they're talking about, where it'll be easier to depict on than on the drawing.
That.
Yeah, it's for heating, it's for heating. I mean, there's, there's places all over the place that have propane tanks.
Can, can, can we delay this discussion in just, right now, what's on the table is determining that this is a, 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 a minor site plan.
Yeah, that's right. Let this guy park his cars and get his deal done, and you can bring up your issues, you know, later on, exactly.
But Jim, can you call the roll on the motion to, 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 um, say that this is a, a, a minor, qualifies for a minor site plan?
Mr. Hamel.
Aye.
Mr. Andrews.
Aye.
Ms. Estabrook.
Aye.
Mr. Foot.
No.
Mr. White.
No.
Ms. Collier.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Um, on a vote of five to two, that is approved, that it has been declared a minor site plan.
Okay, the next thing that we should discuss is, should we take jurisdiction? Do we have enough information to, to take jurisdiction? Is, will someone make a motion?
I so move, this is Annie.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Sandra.
Jim, can you call the roll?
Mr. Hamel.
Aye.
Mr. Andrews.
Aye.
Ms. Estabrook.
Aye.
Mr. Foot.
No.
Mr. White.
No.
Ms. Collier.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
On a vote of five to two, that passes.
Okay, now we can discuss the plan. And now, I, I've got a, so inside this, um, fenced-in area, that, that the already existing fenced-in area that's there, or is it a different or expanded or less of an, uh, fenced-in area than, than already exists?
Already existing fenced-in area.
So, so it's, so the fenced-in area is not going to change?
That's correct.
And do I understand that inside this fenced-in area, there is also a propane tank?
I supplied the picture, an aerial picture. If Jim would bring that up, um, you'll be able to see it. It's the propane tank that heats the building.
I, I, I don't have it at access right at the moment.
Roger, I can clarify.
Okay.
There's no issues with the propane tank. There's no issues with 3,000. It is certified, we do inspect it every year. The issue is gaining access to it in case it leaks, is that they're with the gated fence up there now, which wasn't there before, they only put that gated fence up there, I believe, last year, when they took those campers, uh, from Lawrence, and they were storing them there, either last year or the year before. Um, and then the dumpster that's blocking the fire lane in the back, that if something did happen, we, we don't have access.
So where, where, can you give, oh, you can't see, where is the dumpster? Jim, do you know, you know where the dumpster is?
It, it, it's not shown on here. Can I make a comment about this map? This is the same map that was used by.
Ground Care.
Ground, Ground Care, and was approved. There is, when Ground Care came in for approval, there was a fence that was commented on being across here. Um, the, the fence is still existing. There is fence up along where it says God Rail, and there is a fence across the back and down the side.
It says propane right there on the side, Jim, where your locker was.
The, right here is the propane storage tank, which is 1,000 gallons. It has eight-inch bulids at each corner, and it has some sort of emergency uplight. Um, however, none of the, none of this has changed, um, and I believe that was three years ago, when the, um, Ground Care came in. Ground Care uses this area over here for their storage bins, and this area is used with their vehicle equipment.
Jim, does that company have an occupancy permit filed with the building department?
Excuse me?
Do they have a legit occupancy permit with the building department?
Uh, quite honestly, uh, that you'd have to ask the building department.
I can check on that, I can check on that next week. I believe so. They went through the process with the planning board.
Well, they didn't, they didn't, they did not get it signed off by the building, the building department, or the fire department, or the road agent, or whoever else is on that occupancy form.
So I'd like to, I'd like to suggest that, um, the process of getting the life safety inspection for Junction Trucking is going to bring the fire department there and will be able to deal with whatever issues are there at the same time. I don't think that, um, these people need to be held responsible for some other condition of something else. I, I, I really don't think we ought to be holding them up from being able to pursue their business in our town.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Roger, this is Sandra, could I say something?
Go right ahead.
I more or less agree with Annie. Um, the little yellow spot is the, um, the office that you're gonna occupy, correct? So will your entrance be from the front onto 108?
It, it has its separate entrance, yes, right in the front.
Okay, and that was my point also, um, we're approving it as a business. The occupancy permit, I believe, comes from the building department. So I believe I thank these people for coming to us and saying that they're going to have a different business in the area, and like I said, I think we should approve it, and then the, uh, the building department issues occupancy permit, I believe.
Do you make the motion, Sandra?
Yes, I would like to make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, so the motion is to a, a, approve the, um, change in use, and the conditions would be that they, uh, get an occupancy permit?
Mm-hmm.
Did we have any other conditions you want to add to that?
Will the life safety inspection be a part of the occupancy permit?
It is.
Okay.
Can we have a time limit on that?
There's a six-month time limit on any conditional of, condition of approval.
Jim, we're not going six months without a life safety inspection, come on.
Well, they can't, no, no, they can't move in until they have, until they have the occupancy permit. That's, that's, that's the condition.
Right.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
They have, they, they have to get, they, they have to get the, 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 the occupancy permit before they can move in.
That's standard.
Uh, it's not standard with our town, but that's a different fight, but that's fine.
Exactly.
Roger, this is Barbara, may I make one comment?
Go right ahead.
Um, I believe when the, uh, the fire department comes and does their life safety, that probably the access to the tanks can be satisfied by the owner of the property giving a key to that gate to the fire department.
Well, that, that's for the, for the fire chief to determine.
Right.
Any other comments from the board or from the public?
Hold on one second, we, we have to add the hours too for the approval.
Okay.
Which is eight to four, Monday through Friday, eight to 12 on Saturday, and closed on Sunday.
Good, thanks, thanks, Barbara.
Any other comments from anyone? So Jim, do you have the, the motion?
Yep, uh, the motion is to approve the application with the following conditions, that is to, uh, obtain an occupancy permit and with the hours of operation as listed in my notes. There's Monday through Friday, Saturday noon to 12, and closed on Sunday, and I don't, I'm not flipping back pages.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, he, um.
Yeah, Mr. Doggett?
Go ahead.
Somebody's trying to speak, Roger.
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Doggett, once, I mean, we, we already have an occupancy permit. And so where do we take that to, to get this all squared away? Just bring that down to the, the city hall or so this guy can just move in or how does that go about?
Who's speaking?
I'm sorry?
Can you ask him who's speaking?
Yes.
This is Greg with Newton Properties LLC, I represent the owner of the building.
Thank you.
Yeah, but the, the, your, your new tenant is going to need an occupancy permit for his business. So the occupancy permit you have for the building isn't, he, he's going to have to get us a new one just for his, his business.
His, his 362 foot square foot office that's within our building, okay.
Right.
And just so I understand, where, where does that?
The building department.
Okay, and then, you know, he brings that occupancy permit down or it gets approved? And then, you know, how long until he can, is this, this doesn't have to go in front of the planning board again?
No.
No.
Okay, all right, goes, gets turned into the building, inspect, you know, the building and then he can just come in. Okay, got it, thank you.
Okay, any other comments from anyone? Jim, will you call a roll?
Mr. Hamel?
Hi.
Mr. Andrews?
Hi.
Ms. Estabrook?
Hi.
Mr. Foot?
Hi, with no stipulations.
Mr. White?
Hi.
Ms. Collier?
Hi.
Ms. White?
Hi.
That is unanimous.
Okay, very good.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Have a good night.
Thank you as well.
But we appreciate you coming to, coming to Newton with your business.
Thank you.
We like your town, good.
Might be moving across the border soon.
You're right. Live through your life.
Have a great night, thank you, everybody.
Have a good night.
Okay, so with that, I close that hearing. Now the next item, where'd it go? Is the manifest.
Move to approve, this is Annie.
Wait a second.
$87.44.
Right.
Is there a second?
Hi.
Jim, can you call a roll?
The second was by Jim White.
Correct.
Mr. Hamel?
Hi.
Ms. Estabrook?
Hi.
Ms. Collier?
Hi.
Mr. Foot? Mr. Foot?
I don't see him on here anymore.
Neither do I, Mr. White?
Hi.
Mr. Andrews?
Hi.
Ms. White?
Hi.
Six in favor, none against.
Okay. Next item is the minutes of the August 11th meeting.
I move to approve. This is Annie.
I have, that was Jim, I've seconded, I have two corrections. One is on page four in the sixth paragraph where it, it says that and found that the previous subdivision plan that referenced the distance of 50.07 feet, that should be the revised plan references the distances 50.07 feet.
Okay.
And also on page 10, after Ms. Collier moved, it was Mr. Hamel that asked the administrative assistant to call a roll. I was at the chair, not, not Ms. Estabrook.
Oh, sorry.
Those are the only changes that I have.
I saw a spelling one, but I can't refine it, so not a big deal, we don't.
Yeah, that's.
Thirteen pages.
Yes. You're doing a great job with these minutes.
Okay, so can we have, so the, can we have a vote on accepting the minutes with the changes?
Mr. Hamel?
Hi.
Ms. Estabrook?
Hi.
Ms. Collier?
Hi.
Mr. Foot has not returned. Mr. White?
Hi.
Mr. Andrews?
Hi.
Ms. White?
Hi.
That is six in favor, none in opposition. I'm still, I'm still not seeing Mr. Foot present.
Do we have any correspondence?
The only correspondence we received, I sent out to people.
Okay. Does anyone have any additional items to bring before the board? If not at 10:59, I declare us adjourned.
Oh, thank God.
Good night, everybody.
We made it before 11 o'clock.
Good night.
They've cleared the agenda, good night.
You're all leaving because I have to download this.
Yes.
We're all leaving. Hope we can push my button, good night.
Bye.
Good night.